Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Select meeting. It's Tuesday, May 28th. Can you join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that. Call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. As far as I know, there is no one seeking public comment, and I see no hands raised. So we'll go forward with our agenda. Just to give everyone sort of an overview of why there's so many people here, the board hasn't doubled. This is our planning board next to me. First, we'll go down and introduce ourselves. Becky, start.
Hi, Becky Boucher, Select Board Member.
Jason Aves, Select Board Member.
Kathy Kestrel, Select Board Member.
Ed Watson, Member of Board of Select.
That's green, yes.
Captain McNulty, Planning Board.
Brad Legos, Planning Board.
Patrick Molina, Planning Board.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have the Planning Board joining us because our first agenda items, one and two, are being presented to us by the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, Housing Production Plan and Hazard Mitigation Plan. So I'd ask the representatives from the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission if they would like to come to the podium. Are we going to have a microphone for them or not?
We have a bound mic for them, or hand them whatever they want.
Okay.
What's easier for you?
That's good.
We also have this.
The one that turns off the light over there.
That's sufficient. I can stand right here and I'll share my screen. I'll get to be here with you today. I'm just going to pull up this document that we can work through, and then I'll hop right in.
Brad? Brad?
Hello, everyone. My name is Ian Burns with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. I'm joined tonight by Kayla Rennie. We're both on the Community and Economic Development Team at the Planning Commission. It's a night full of MVPC tonight, I think, because then after me, Hannah Mogenson is here to present on the Hazard Mitigation Plan from our Environmental Department. So lots of fun planning activities for you all this evening. But myself and Kayla are here specifically to talk a little bit about the Housing Production Plan, which is a process that we have been undertaking with the town here for about the past year, and I've been doing that as well with the other cities and towns across the Merrimack Valley region. Before I begin, I do have some physical copies of this document if any members of the Board would like one. I can grab a packet.
I believe you all have a copy of it.
I have a copy.
Does any?
You have it all.
Okay. I think we're set on that.
Perfect. So like I said, Ian Burns with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, we work with 15 cities and towns in the region for those that are unfamiliar with us. So we help planning initiatives all the way from Lawrence, follow the river all the way to the coast, and Newburyport, those 15 cities and towns, we provide assistance to those communities, Groveland, of course, being one of them. And as a part of that assistance, my department has been working on housing production plans with those 15 cities and towns over the past year. Housing production plans are a state-guided plan for improving your affordable housing production in your community. Not only in this plan do we talk about increasing affordable housing in the town, but we talk about increasing housing of all types and what the future need may be for Groveland. So this process started, like I said, about a year ago, and we're excited to present to you all the draft version of that document today. This draft will eventually, once completed, need to be approved by both the Planning Board and Select Board before it is sent to the state for their approval on the document. With that, I'm going to work through a couple of sections. What we're going to do tonight, this is a draft version, like I said, it's not in the final pretty formatted version, we're just keeping all the text and graphs here right now when we make edits, and then we'll have a polished version once complete. But what we're going to do is kind of just scroll through a couple key points in each chapter. I'm not going to work and read through every 30, every one of the 35 pages of the document because we don't have any to sit here for that. So I'm just going to skim as we go through and talk about a couple sections with you all. I'm going to cover the first couple chapters, and then my colleague Kayla is going to come up and talk a little bit at the end with some of the review and some of the goals that we've outlined. So with that, I'm going to hop right in. As you can see, there's five main chapters of the Housing Production Plan. The first chapter, the introduction, goes into a little bit about the background of the process that we went through, what a housing production plan is. Like I said, that is a state-guided plan, and it's really used for a community to articulate its vision for affordable housing production, used to demonstrate what the need might be based off of current data that we're observing in the community and across the region. And it is also a way for a community to reach safe harbor status through the state's 40B statute. So many of you may be aware of 40B, which allows developers to override certain local zoning regulations in order to build affordable housing. I know Groveland is very familiar because you recently had a housing development approved through that process. This is one of those ways that communities can build in some protection, if you check a few boxes with it, from those types of developments. I'm going to scroll past most of the introduction because it is mostly boilerplate items and go right to the data section. What I'd like to do is talk about a few key data points that we keep in mind while crafting some goals and strategies for Groveland. And then for folks on the Board, I know you've seen the whole document before, and this is also with all of the Board's materials, feel free to ask me questions about charts that I don't mention because I just want to give you the highlights instead of going through each individual data point here. But a few key items. First, we'll start off with the demographic profile in Groveland. So what we have here are some population projections for the town. So this starts looking at what we recorded in the census in 2010 and 2020, and then based off of trends, based off of death, birth, and migration rates, what the population may look like over the next few decades. And so as you can see, from 2010 through 2020, the population grew. That population growth is expected to continue through 2040 in Groveland. After 2040, there's a projected decrease in population, again, mostly due to the trends we're seeing right now with in-migration, out-migration from town, birth and mortality rates. So if current population trends hold, we would expect to see a decrease in the town's population post 2040. However, one of the things we think about with this plan is how can housing be used to ensure there is a steady population growth or just a steady maintenance of the population you have here today in Groveland? Because growing communities, as we know, are healthy communities, and so how can we encourage the right type of growth that Groveland wants to see? The next data point that we show pretty often in all of our communities across the region is what we expect to see in the change in Groveland's age cohorts. And so this, again, are population projections, starting in 2010, what we observed in the census in 2010 and 2020, and then the projection through 2050. The key point that we like to show communities, and it is seen here in Groveland and in many of our cities and towns, is the change in this 65-plus population, which is that blue line there. And so in Groveland and in much of the Merrimack Valley, we're seeing that 65 population roughly double between 2010 and 2050. That is a pretty significant change and shift in a lot of our communities. So what we want to consider as we craft a housing production plan is what type of housing, a population that is a plurality of 65-plus individuals, what types of housing will they be looking for, what types of housing will they need? This is a great opportunity right now to plan for those future needs, when we know that's what the projections are showing us in terms of the age cohort changes over the next several decades. We also like to point out school enrollment trends in communities. One of the things that we call out specifically in the plan is some of the research that's been done on the correlation between housing production and school enrollment. We hear these concerns pretty often from communities and from residents about what happens if you build, let's say, a large multifamily housing development, what's the cost in the schools for that? Groveland, we've been seeing a pretty steady decrease in school enrollment over the past decade or so. One of the things that's really interesting, I mentioned some of that research, we found that especially with multifamily housing development, there isn't a huge correlation between multifamily housing development and school population increases. That's mostly because a lot of that housing development tends to be studio, one, two, and some three bedrooms, and you don't see a lot of families moving into those types of housing units. At large, we also see pretty much across most cities and towns in the Commonwealth, there isn't much of a correlation between housing growth and school enrollment trends. Some of the communities in our region that have seen the most housing growth have seen the least amount or almost no change in their school enrollment. So it's really interesting data to dig into, but we talk a little bit about that in this section of the plan. I'm going to scroll down a little bit more, we're going to skip forward here, just so that we don't cover every single piece, and talk about Groveland's existing housing stock. And so these charts here, we like to show because they exhibit what size household, how many people are living in individual households compared to how big those households actually are. So we do this chart in each of our communities. On the left is the occupancy of housing units, and on the right is the number of bedrooms those housing units actually have. So as you can see, between these two pie charts, for example, one- or two-person households, this blue and this yellow here, they make up 55% of Groveland's homes. But then when you look over here and see the one- and two-bedroom homes, they make up 32% of the housing stock. So there's a bit of a gap there between one- or two-person households and one- or two-bedroom homes. We expect there to be a pretty, a good-sized gap in a lot of our communities, and we expect there always will be, mostly because often as, you know, parents become empty nesters, they want to stay in their four-bedroom home, let's say, so that their kids and grandkids can come home. But when we see a large gap like that, we are concerned that there may not be choice for some of those older adults that may want to downsize. Because all of these one- or two-person households, if they wanted to live in a one- or two-bedroom home, they're competing for only that many units. And so when we look at those units across town, we wonder if there's enough options there for residents that may want to have smaller housing options. That's not only the case for older adults that want to downsize, but also young adults, new residents moving in, new families that might be looking for a smaller starter home before they find a bigger house for a bigger family. Keep scrolling down. Like I said, we're going to kind of just gloss over a couple charts, and I'm happy to answer questions if members of the Board saw other things they wanted to talk about. I'm going to go to page 19 here, those following along with your copies. So this is housing cost burden. So the U.S. Census Bureau defines cost burden as an individual or a household that's spending more than 30% of their income on housing, and that is your pre-tax income on housing costs. And your housing costs are everything from your rent and your mortgage to your homeowner's insurance and taxes. When we look at Groveland, we actually see a pretty similar spread of cost burden as we see in some other suburban communities in our region. Groveland, about half, actually exactly half of all renters in Groveland are cost burdened. That's a pretty significant number, so it means half of the folks renting their homes in Groveland are paying too much and can't afford the rental home that they're living in. Overall, Groveland, it's about 28% of folks that are housing cost burdened, and your owners, you see about 1 in 4 homeowners are cost burdened. So you see a pretty significant amount of individuals that are cost burdened. One of the things that's a little bit unique to Groveland that I like to mention in this chart, the cost burden is made up of these orange and yellow bars here. Orange is what's known as severely cost burdened, and that's when you're spending more than 50% of your gross income on housing costs. What's unique, and what we think might be skewed a little bit by Groveland's small data size, is we're showing here 47% of renters being severely cost burdened. We'd expect that number to be a little bit lower and a less large of a share of the overall cost burden because we're showing only 3% to be just cost burdened, that 30%. This is American Community Survey data, so what might be happening is, you know, only a few renter households in Groveland, given the small sample size, get that American Community Survey, and that can skew the numbers. So when we actually dug into it on the Census Bureau's website, there was a large margin of error with this dataset specifically, that 47%, but that 50% of overall renters still holds pretty true. It's more, what does that make up of cost burden that we are a little less confident in in terms of the cost burden chip in Groveland? And I'm going to keep scrolling and go to one more data point before we take any questions on this data section from you all. Page 21, I'm going to skip over to for those that have a packet. So on this page, we talk a bit more about housing affordability, and we talk about what's called the affordability gap. And so what we do is we analyze the median sale price for a single-family home in Groveland, and then we look at what the median income is in Groveland and what that median income could afford compared to what homes are selling for in town. So in 2023, we saw a median sales price around $593,000. That's all single-family home types from maybe a townhouse to a larger home. However, if you are making Groveland's median household income, which is $111,000 a year, you can only afford a house that's $425,000 in order to not be cost burdened. That means there's an affordability gap of $168,000 in Groveland, where there's that mismatch between what people are making and how much the homes actually cost in town. Groveland, this is not unique for the town. In some of our other communities, we see a much wider affordability gap. In some communities, it's a little bit closer, but we see a gap pretty much everywhere. So that's significant when we think about who is living in town right now, and I think it makes the most impact when we talk about residents that may have bought into Groveland 20, 30 years ago. Could you afford your home today that you're living in right now if you had to buy it today? I think for a lot of people, the answer tends to be no because of that drastic increase in prices. And so that gap exists there at the median, and so it's an interesting item to think about as we talk about affordability and the impacts on the community of folks being able to afford their housing. That is my quick overview of the data section. I wanted to pause there before we talk about some Groveland-specific considerations and recommendations, but happy to take any questions if folks gloss over things too quickly with any of those data points or you want any clarification. Yeah?
My question was, seeing that you took the data from 2023, it's a survey data, is that correct?
Some of the data would be from the 2023 American Community Survey. Depending on the data, it's from different datasets, and some may be from the 2020 census.
Okay, so you have the 2020 census, and then 2023 housing data, you think, possibly?
The housing data comes from both the census and the American Community Survey. They surveyed different questions.
Okay.
And so some of it is a different time period. What the American Community Survey actually is is five-year averages, so it would include that 2020 range in its averages.
Okay.
But we take 2020, specifically population data with most.
Was there any thought or adjustment for sort of the coming out of the pandemic in the, what I'd call a bubble in the housing market, where we saw like really rapid bidding on homes? It's not that typical of our town.
Yeah.
Was there an adjustment for that in this data or not?
Yeah, so one of the things we talk about in the narrative portion of that data, especially as we talk about this affordability gap, is the impact that current interest rates are having on that environment and the impact of that rapid increase in home sales. And so although this is 2023 data, and what we could do is add, as I said, this is a draft, and we'd like your feedback, we can show the change maybe from 2020, and we can put that information in there. But in this narrative section here specifically, we talked a little bit about how that's current interest rates, and maybe we could expand a bit on how that has a pretty significant impact on your ability to afford a home. If our interest rates right now are around 7%, and if you cut that even to 5%, that affordable price goes up a good amount for someone. So it's certainly something we consider and talk about, and we can expand on it if you feel like you want some more narrative in there. That's what we're here to get feedback on today.
Okay, no, not at this moment. Thank you.
Yeah. Questions on that section? So I'll just briefly mention the next chapter before I hand things over to my colleague Kayla to talk about some of the recommendations that we have here in Groveland. This section, the Housing Development Considerations, talks about basically the current infrastructure in Groveland. What are the environmental constraints in town? What's the transportation infrastructure look like, sewer, water, those sorts of things? So Groveland, of course, being a smaller town, a more rural community, has more constraints there, so talking a bit about how that less availability of sewer and water has an impact on what you can actually build in town, and that should be considered when we're talking about the types of housing, and will be considered when we get into some of those recommendations. We also talk a bit about the environmental constraints. As is in here right now, we have a placeholder from the town's previous hazard mitigation plan, where it talked about some of the natural hazards to be concerned about when thinking about housing production. Hannah, like I said earlier, is here to present an update to the town's hazard mitigation plan. So what we're actually going to do is coming out of tonight, once Hannah gets some feedback on the hazard mitigation plan, we're going to incorporate that 2024 draft into this section to make sure it's the most up-to-date for the town, reflecting your current environmental In the interest of time, I won't read through everything on here, but just to say that we spent some time talking about what is necessary to consider when we think about that housing development. And then the second section in there details the different zoning districts, a lot what you folks may be familiar with already. I'm going to scroll right past to the Housing Production Strategies. I'm going to pause there and hand it over to my colleague Kayla to talk a little bit about the strategies that we've outlined here. Before Kayla comes up, I'll mention that these strategies, like I said, this is a draft plan. We've talked pretty extensively with the town, we've talked a lot with Annie and Rebecca, and we went through a public meeting a couple months ago where we presented some ideas and got feedback from the public on the strategies. So this is what we have right now with some ways that Groveland could maybe try and address some of those concerns that we mentioned earlier and some of those opportunities that might be there. But we're looking to hear your feedback on if you think this is a fit or not a fit, if we need to see changes, or if we need to see adjustments here and there with some of these strategies. So I'll let Kayla come up and talk a bit about them.
Hi, everyone. So I'm here to talk about some of the strategies that we developed, as Ian mentioned, in conjunction with, you know, the town staff, some residents. We've had some public engagement, getting a lot of feedback on, you know, what we can do in Groveland in the next five years to really further some of these housing production plan goals. So I'm just going to go through really quick a couple of these strategies, and of course, if there are any questions about individual ones, happy to take that as we go along. So the first strategy that we're looking at here is expanding the accessory dwelling unit bylaw to allow for detached structures. So Groveland, of course, had recently updated the zoning bylaw for EDUs, but we wanted to potentially look at expanding that in the future to allow for detached. We're looking at a couple of communities in the region that have similar bylaws. For example, West Newbury has something very similar, which would allow for detached EDUs. So just exploring some of those options to allow for additional options for homeowners if they would like to build a detached EDU on their property. So that would be one of them. And then another one that we're looking at is investigating models that address creation of starter homes that are right-sized. And we also say starter home, you know, we really like to emphasize more of that right-sized home language, because, you know, when we talk about, you know, smaller homes that might fit the needs of residents, we might be talking about, you know, a starter home, maybe a couple wants to move into town, they don't need, you know, a large five-bedroom home, they want something smaller. That would, of course, be considered a starter home, but you might also have a lot of situations where seniors in town are living in larger homes and they would like options to downsize. It's not necessarily their starter home, but something that might be a little bit more right-sized, as we would say for them. However, a method for addressing this and investigating some of these models, the state has actually created what's called Chapter 40Y, which is a starter home district. So essentially, you can create zoning that allows for smaller lot sizes, you know, smaller footprint of the building to encourage more of those starter homes, you know, in terms of development. So that's something that we're keeping an eye on right now. The state has yet to release the specific regulations, but something that should be coming, hopefully, the summer by the end of the year. So as they start releasing those guidelines, that's something that we would like to look towards. Several communities across the Merrimack Valley have also expressed interest in these starter home districts. We felt like it was a really good fit for Groveland as well. Another strategy here, which is very crucial, is conducting ongoing community education on housing development options and challenges. So of course, you know, as we went through this housing production plan process, we really wanted to hear from residents about what their housing challenges have been and what are some of these strategies that we can use to address them. But we also learned that, you know, there's always room for, you know, education and community engagement when it comes to housing. So this strategy is really geared towards, you know, not just when we're updating these plans, but as we're going along, as we're doing some more of this work with investigating these starter home districts, you know, looking towards adjusting the EDU bylaw, things like that, you know, we want to make sure residents are involved and have their voice heard. So we really want to have that continuous public engagement as part of a draft strategy here. Something else to highlight here as well is not just engaging the general public, but also engaging you all. It's important for our boards and commissions in the valley to be updated on, you know, new regulations and new information as it comes along. There's several resources for that. CHAPA has some really great resources, along with MHP. We are also a good resource for community engagement, so looking forward to continuing that in the future with Groveland. Fourth strategy we have here is to activate and utilize private and municipally-owned properties to develop housing that supports community needs. This came out of a lot of existing work that had been done in Groveland, investigating places like 150 Center Street, for example. So something we really wanted to keep in mind as we were developing these strategies is really highlighting, of course, you know, encouraging development on private properties, but especially some of those town-owned properties where there might be some really great opportunities for some housing that could really serve the community. So that's definitely something that we're keeping in mind here as well. Another key strategy here that we're looking at is investigating the feasibility of establishing an affordable housing trust in order to utilize Community Preservation Act funds and inclusionary zoning payments in lieu to create affordable housing. So the town had passed inclusionary zoning back in 2018, which is great, and of course, we want to be able to utilize some of those payments in lieu to go towards affordable housing. So establishing an affordable housing trust or exploring the feasibility of establishing one is really one of those first key steps. And then we're also able to, of course, utilize some CPA funds if there's an affordable housing trust established as well. There's plenty of guides for creating that. There's also some technical assistance funding that we would love to help explore with the town to help establish that for you all. Sixth strategy here, which is what several communities are looking at right now, is of course, we've all heard about, achieving compliance with the MBTA Communities Law through a locally-informed plan that addresses Groveland's housing needs. So of course, as a lot of you have seen, you know, several town meetings have been happening in the last month or so. We've had a lot of communities across the Commonwealth approve their MBTA community zoning. Groveland still has some time. You have until December of 2025 to be in compliance, and of course, this was a strategy we felt like made sense to include here, as of course, the town is already kind of working towards that. But of course, we also wanted to highlight not just achieving compliance with the law, but also doing it in a way that makes sense and is very locally driven. Another strategy here as well is to collaborate with the Groveland Housing Authority to increase supply of affordable housing and maximize staffing capacity. So this is definitely something we wanted to incorporate. We had a lot of great feedback with the affordable, or sorry, with the Housing Authority. So we want to make sure this was definitely highlighted as a strategy, especially in terms of maximizing that staff capacity. There's a lot of work to be done, and of course, we would love to help address some of those gaps and help with that. So just to kind of reiterate here, we wanted to include an action plan matrix for not just the strategies we have here, but also a little bit of a general timeline of when we're kind of hoping, you know, these goals can be achieved, as well as identifying not just those key first steps, but also those funding opportunities. Of course, there's a lot of work to be done. There's, you know, a lot of times funding that needs to go along with it. So we really took some time here to lay out some really great options for Groveland to explore, not just to take those first couple steps, but also to find those funding opportunities for the town. So just to go through really quickly here, this is all, again, you know, kind of what we were just going over in detail, but, you know, a little bit more bulleted here. When it comes to things like the EDU bylaw analysis, you know, investigating starter homes, we kind of anticipate, you know, two, in around two to three years, that's something that would be addressed. We're aware, you know, Groveland's going to want to be coming to town meeting to do MBTA Communities compliance, so maybe that's something that gets addressed after that is done. Community engagement, of course, is something that should be ongoing. We're hoping to continue to do that over the next five years as we kind of work to implement this five-year plan, along with activating those municipally-owned properties. This is already ongoing with the town, so hoping to just continue with those efforts. Investigating the Affordable Housing Trust and achieving compliance with the MBTA Communities Law, we see this happening, you know, in the next year or so. Of course, Groveland has a deadline with the MBTA community zoning, not necessarily a up against a timeline with the Affordable Housing Trust, but of course, the earlier we can get the town set up with that, the better. And then, of course, collaborating with the Groveland Housing Authority to investigate models that will expand that staff capacity, that's something that, a little bit of a longer term goal there. Hopefully, that is something that comes along with some of these other strategies as well. So just a little bit of background with those strategies. Happy to answer any questions or comments.
Affordable Housing Trust, does that incorporate the already affordable housing by law that we've had in place here for 20 years, which is funded?
So I think for the trust, and maybe Ian corrects me.
Do you mean from the Affordable Housing by law that was passed?
Passed 20 years ago, and a portion of the funds of the house, I believe it's like eight to $10,000 per new home, goes into the Affordable Housing by law, which is used for affordable housing. I know of one project that was kicked off. It's out on.
Yeah, so that could be a vehicle for helping to distribute some of those funds, similar to what the inclusionary zoning payments in lieu. If I'm understanding correctly, it's currently an account that's set up for.
It's been in 20 years, and it's, it probably has a standard subdivision with 10 houses with, you know, drop 100,000 plus into it, which is funded. So did you know about that?
So that's a, that's part of the inclusionary by law. We just don't have an Affordable Housing Trust to administer those funds. So we do have the payment in lieu of the, of providing those units, so we do have some money sitting aside in the account. But without having a housing trust, we have no way to utilize those funds.
Some of it was utilized for the, for the single, the single project up on 97.
We do not have a financial mechanism to touch those funds unless we have a housing trust.
Okay. So, so those funds that were used on that, how were those distributed?
I'm not sure how they were used and if they were really used. We can check the account, but we have not seen a withdrawal from that account.
Yeah, it might have been prior to you getting here, but it's been, we set it up a long time ago exactly for this. And so affordable housing, which has, does have a need in Groveland, could be done. So we have to see what's, yeah, we have to see what's in that, in that account over the last 20 years. I think it's substantial.
There's going to be an issue with you not being on a mic and you not speaking in a mic, and Kayla has the mic. So no, no, why don't we just stop, why don't we just stop this right now, put a pin on it, if that's all right? Because I think we're kind of off the topic here a little bit. So the topic is the housing trust, which I believe West Newbury voted at their annual town meeting this year as a warrant article. So it's certainly something that we can definitely look into and figure out how that would dovetail with anything else that we've been doing. So that, that will be on us. But I mean, you put in the charts, it raises our awareness of it, and I, and I truly appreciate that. And just kind of ask, Ed, do you have any questions on this chart?
I'm not sure it's on this, but on the, on the MBTA Community Law, some of our neighboring communities are now looking to opt out, where the, the state has mandated that they comply or lose, lose state money. And some of them are going to court to do that. Do you have any update on, on those that have been to court to not have to comply?
Thank you. Not have to comply with the MBTA Community Law?
So in terms of the current lawsuit that's happening, we will not know the results of that until probably later in the fall, potentially the end of this year. But what we're encouraging communities to do is, you know, at the end of the day, it's up to the voters at town meeting if they want to adopt the zoning or not. But ultimately, it's in the, in a community's best favor to work towards, you know, coming up with the plan, creating the district, you know, doing the due diligence of, of developing the by law. And then, you know, at the end of the day, if, if residents decide not to adopt that, then that's ultimately their choice. But we really are encouraging all of our communities, you know, to, to work towards compliance at least and, and come up with that plan. I know Groveland's already been doing a lot of work with that, so that's definitely something that we wanted to incorporate into this plan. And that's why we also wanted to highlight in here as well that, you know, we really want this to be something that's locally driven. You know, even though this is a state law that's coming down, we've really tried to emphasize with all of our communities that, you know, there, there's a factor of local control here at the end of the day, when, when it comes to creating the zoning district. You know, there's a lot of options about where you can put it, what kind of parameters and, and design guidelines you want to have in the by law. So we, we are really encouraging our communities, you know, I know that there's some towns that have voted it down. They still do have some time to get into compliance. I know we have several communities that will be going for a fall town meeting, for example, but just something that we, we recommend.
Now, from what I've, what I've read, and, and correct me if, if I'm mistaken, it, the way I read it, it's within, so, so much distance from an MBTA stop, a, a bus line that we have going down to River Pines. So it, it, and it's not that much distance from the, the public transportation, if you will, whether it be a subway line or a bus line, a train line. And the only thing we have is the bus line. Do you know what the parameters are in part of the distance?
Yeah, so Groveland currently doesn't have any requirements in terms of where it can, you know, the district can be located in town. The only requirements are if you have a commuter rail station stop in your town, or if you're a rapid transit community with like a T stop in your town. Those communities are required to zone within a half a mile. But the rest of the communities, you know, adjacent small towns, the other adjacent communities, for example, they don't have that requirement. So they don't necessarily, even if they have bus lines, you don't necessarily have to zone around the bus line. Of course, you know, as part of the spirit of the law, we want to encourage housing, you know, kind of around public transit. So if there are some great options for zoning in town that also happen to be, you know, along some of these bus routes, that, you know, would make for a good zoning practice, but it's not necessarily required.
Because looking at where our bus, our bus comes over the bridge and comes over here to River Pines, if you're saying a half a mile, there's not much land available within a half a mile of the bus line.
So again, it doesn't necessarily have to be along the bus line. You could zone anywhere in town that you would like. And something else to keep in mind as well, and just for the reference of, you know, the lack of available land potentially kind of along that bus line. So when it comes to this MBTA community zoning, you don't necessarily have to be, a lot, some communities have been, but you don't necessarily have to be choosing, you know, an empty parcel that isn't developed. You could choose parcels that already currently have, you know, some sort of building on that site. Again, this is, you know, a zoning requirement. It's not a production requirement. Groveland's not required to build that many units. They're just required to allow for that zoning capacity. So when we take a look at the zoning, and we can get a little bit, you know, deep into this, but we have something called the compliance model that kind of, you know, allows us to take a look at a potential, you know, unit capacity for a site. But the way the model treats this zoning is it essentially treats it as if nothing was currently there. It says, what is the maximum you could build? Now, we know that, you know, real site constraints, and if there's already something existing, it might make it a lot less likely to be developed in the future for multifamily housing. But it's just allowing that option is what's going to get, you know, a community into compliance.
Thank you.
Jason, did you have any questions now?
No. Becky?
I have two questions and a comment. First, is there any data on town service cost increases, like police, fire, and maintaining our roads with this? I looked at some studies, some academic journals, but they were like from 2014. I know our economy is very different than it was 10 years ago, so I didn't know if there was any data available for that.
So it's not something that we necessarily looked at in depth for this plan, especially because when it comes to, most of the time, when it comes to examining, you know, increases for town services, sometimes that would be around a specific project, because it's a lot easier to kind of quantify, you know, the direct impact. A lot of, you know, the goals that we have laid out in here, it's very abstract, so it's a little difficult to kind of predict what those changes could look like. However, it's something that we've had asked in several communities as part of this housing production plan process, and it's definitely something that we're open to, you know, examining as we kind of look towards those next five years of implementation, is really looking at some of those, you know, statistics and data.
Okay. Then on the flip side, are there any studies on town revenue increases, like excise tax from the new residents, like local business support, and even additional state funding? I know that's probably going to be the same answer.
Yeah, I would say probably around the same answer. Yeah, there's definitely, there's things that we want to consider when we look at, you know, the impact of housing development. You know, of course, we want to take a look at potential impacts for town services, things like that. But of course, there are also some really great financial benefits for housing production. So that's, again, something that, you know, didn't really get the time to be so in depth with, with this plan, but we're hoping that as we go forward down the line, we're able to kind of incorporate some of that information.
Okay. And then just a comment, don't worry. So I think when people hear the words development or affordable, there tends to be this immediate emotional response, which can lead to assumptions and lead to misinformation. So with that being said, I'm all for that strategy three of keeping community informed and the boards aligned and informed on that messaging. I see that as being a very important strategy moving forward with something like this. That's, that's all I got.
Absolutely. We agree as well.
I'm just a last follow up question. On the last page, you have a chart. And you've listed one fifty Center Street, listed one eighty one R School Street, I think I've heard about that one. Cedar Dale, I'm aware of what that is. Nichols Village, yes, aware. Salem Street, our forty B. SD Park, says conceptual.
Yeah, so this was part of examining, we did a mapping exercise, essentially looking at some of the sites in town that could be potentially used for housing development. I will give this with a little bit of a disclaimer here that, you know, we do have some projects in here that are a little bit more specific, you know, they have actual unit counts, things like that. But we also tried to imagine if there were potential sites in town that, you know, under perfect conditions, potentially sometime in the future, they could be maybe reimagined for housing. They might be extremely conceptual, and it might not necessarily even be something that could happen in the next five years. But it's just something that we want to keep in mind. When we did the, well, not necessarily me, but when the, when MVPC did the last housing production plan update, this was also very similar. We had some components to this, you know, future housing production plan kind of table here that were very specific. They were very specific projects. Some of them had already been permitted, but there were also several that were extremely conceptual and some that we just carried over in, in just thinking about the future. So it could very well be something that the town also is not willing to explore, and that's totally fine. But we were just trying to think, you know, if this site could ever be potentially reimagined in the future, is something that we want to highlight. But again, you know, these are all very conceptual. It's not necessarily something that would happen anytime soon.
So SD Park is where the lumber used to be, right? Okay. That's what I wanted, just wanted to make sure. And the Garrison Street, where did that come from?
So there, the town was approached about a development at thirty six Garrison Street, which is owned by Nichols Trust. So they're putting together a preliminary plan to move forward with development at that site.
Okay. I thought that was the original site that they owned, correct?
It was a part of the original site, correct?
And now, now they're moving to develop that as well?
They are looking to develop that site.
Through the Nichols Trust?
Through the Nichols Trust and Bethany Homes.
Oh, they're partnering with.
Nigges Nichols currently.
Okay. Oh, okay, thank you. So the last overall question, you said at the beginning that we're going, this is a draft, we're going to review it, and you've talked to us tonight, but at some point, the planning board and the Board of Selectmen need to accept this draft. What does our acceptance signify? What are we accepting?
It's a, it is a local acceptance of the plan to send to the state. You're not committing to doing every strategy outlined here. You're saying that we like these strategies, we'd like to explore this further, this could be the appropriate path for the town. It's whatever you would want to define really your acceptance as. What you're saying is this is a plan that we're looking at, this is the strategies that we want to move forward with. You're not going to be legally held to what is written in here, if that's one of the things we're concerned about, but it is a way for you to say that we're supporting this part of the plan, and then for the state to look at it and approve the plan. Yeah.
So we don't really need to go through in red line stuff that we think we're never going to want to do?
Well, if you think you're never going to do it, I would want it, I would prefer to take that out because that doesn't make sense to include it in a, in a long term plan. So if you look at this and say, that is completely out of left field, that does not make sense for town, it does not make sense to include it. Just like how in a master plan process, you go through a lot of development, and there's maybe different opinions on what makes sense for goals and strategies and what doesn't. We want to include what we've heard multiple times about what, what could be good strategies. But if it, you know, universally says, no, this doesn't make sense, we've already explored that, don't do that, it doesn't make sense to put in a plan. So let us know.
So who approves it first, the planning board or the Board of Selectmen?
Whatever process you would like to follow, typically we see the planning board approves it, and then the select board considers the planning board's approval and recommendation before they vote on their approval.
Okay, that makes sense. You go first.
But, so I believe at a later date, you all be voting on adoption. Once we take your feedback and you have some time to look at it, if you have any comments for us, and send it to us, but at a later date, we'll have like the full polished version for you all to look at and approve.
Do towns typically open up a forum on this draft at this point?
Well, we had some sessions earlier. Right now, we don't have any schedule with other towns. What we are talking about with other communities is publishing the draft, and I believe it's already on the town's website, and so having a feedback forum or an ability for the residents to send in feedback is certainly something we'd be happy to do and have a comment forum available for folks.
Right. But then that would be in the summer. Wasn't that when we'd had it the last time, in the middle of the summer? I was trying to think about the fall being a time when people were around a little bit more.
We, I mean, we'd be happy to work with you on, on the public feedback if you want to encourage more feedback on the draft as it is today. Certainly, when it comes for a vote for approval, as happens with, you know, votes with any public board, you would have the public comment period at the beginning, so there's opportunity as well for residents to make comment during public comment at the beginning of a meeting when that vote would happen.
Do we have a deadline that this has to be done by?
No strict deadline. We're looking at, you know, potentially by the end of the summer, but there's nothing on our end that's holding us up with a deadline at this time.
Okay, I'm just thinking that this is the time of year when everybody goes away to their lake houses, which I don't have, but they, they tend to go away, and we don't get a lot of participation over the summer months.
Yeah, so we did two community engagement sessions over the fall and winter of last year. The fall community engagement session did not get as much attendance as, which was virtual. Then we had an in person in this room in December, which had a good amount of attendance, especially for a small town, but still it was probably about 20 people that attended, I would say, which, when we've looked across the region, we, I don't think we've gotten many more than 30 or 40 at some of the sessions, just through the nature of engagement, I think. But certainly, if you want to encourage more feedback, I don't want to discourage any type of additional input.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a question. And I don't know if you had a right one to ask, maybe, maybe she was. But looking through, I don't see anything that, that lists what our, what if the town of Groveland would be right now, what we have for affordable housing, and what is, what is required at this time?
Yep. So we have early on, Chapter Five, at the beginning of that is what you currently have for affordable units, and then we talk a little bit about what the town needs to reach to reach that 10% statutory threshold in forty B, where all communities under forty B are required to have 10% of their housing stock be designated as affordable. Groveland is only right now at 3.45%. However, there is an asterisk in Groveland's plan specifically that we mentioned at the bottom here, the recent development that was approved for 192 units, that hasn't been permitted yet, so it's not reflected in the numbers because the state doesn't recognize affordable units until they're actually permitted and then registered with the state. So once that is permitted and registered with the state, you'll be above that 10% threshold, but we have to write the plan as your numbers exist today in case anything changes with that development. So we have, right here is what your current number of affordable units are, and then played out if you were to increase those number of affordable units year over year, how you could do that. That's a statutory requirement that we put in here, how many units theoretically to add every year. One of the things we mentioned in the narrative is that, yes, the state encourages this much production year over year, however, we know it's highly unlikely the town would be able to produce that much year over year, but maybe we could look at, is there an ability to do that over one year or over two years? With, again, the caveat that you've already permitted a large development that would change this significantly, or not permitted, I should say, but have not registered that quite yet, but we have to do the numbers as they exist today.
In this area that they're looking at on Garrison Street, am I reading that right? Ninety units there?
Let me scroll down. Probably, I'd welcome the town staff to comment on that as well. Welcome the town staff to comment on that as well.
Correct. It's about 90 units. It will be 65 and older, various means of area median income, so ranging from 30 up to 80% AMI.
Were they going to be three-story, four-story buildings? Because that's a small lot.
I believe it's only going to be two stories.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I believe it's only going to be two stories.
Two stories?
And they would also have local preference. So if you're a Groveland resident looking to downsize and have, meet the affordability restrictions, you would be given first preference over the unit as opposed to any other community looking to move into that unit.
And you think they can put 90 units on that piece of property?
So they'll be before the board with a plan, and they'll be able to outline exactly what they're proposing. So until we have that plan, it looks like they have enough room to do that without taking down any existing vegetation, and it looks like they have the turnarounds for the fire trucks and for access throughout the site.
The neighbors have a chance to weigh in on that project?
They will, they will be notified as it bothers.
Thank you.
Last, you said the approval process, but that you also said that if we permitted that 40B, that changes the table on page 28. So if the table is changed, it'll be updated before we file this?
If you go through that whole process before it's filed, then it would be changed. I doubt it's going to get all the way through registered on the subsidized housing inventory before then. What we can do is that even if it's finished and approved, you can amend this plan at any point over the five-year period. There is a state process to then amend the plan. So once that changes, we can come back in here next year and change that table. But is there a timeline there?
I'm not sure if there's a timeline, but it doesn't really necessarily hurt the town because as long as the actual subsidized housing inventory reflects the amount of units, we wouldn't necessarily be held harm, we wouldn't not meet the requirements of the 10% affordability if in fact we had those units counted. The plan would just not show that with the asterisk showing that we actually were in the process. So you wouldn't have to go through the amendment process. But we could go through that process if you really wanted to, to update the chart.
No, my concern would be that would our, our decision points on what we would want to consider change if we know that we've already met this criteria? And I would think, yes. If we know we've met this criteria, which I think we all feel that we have, because this development has been ongoing for a while now, kind of changes our perspective in looking outward as to what else would be in the best interests of the town. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. And is one of the reasons why in those goals, we did not necessarily articulate building another large multifamily housing development in those goals and strategies. What we were trying to do when talking with residents and talking with the strategy committee we were working with is outline things that would make sense regardless of that development, if there were opportunities for other types of diverse housing types. So the hope is that it's inclusive of that, but if we feel that it's not reflective of whether or not that development is finalized, and it likely is, but regardless of that development, we hope that these strategies hold true. If we feel that's not accurate, then that's something that we should discuss.
I would support that 100%. If you're looking to amend the strategies, we should definitely do that. If you're just looking to amend the chart, I wouldn't say that that's a substantial item that you need to focus on. But if you're amending the strategies, definitely, we would want to do that before we submit this to the state.
Yes, I think that's, I would be more concerned, especially the strain on our water system. And we're already talking about a water treatment plant that we don't have, we don't have funding for. And we're extending the water district to this huge development, and we don't know how that's going to impact all of us. I think we're pretty sure it's going to impact all of us. We're just not sure how. And I know the schools are concerned too. How is this going to impact our schools? We don't know. So that does kind of over, overarching over all of our decision-making because we have an idea how many units it is, but we don't know specifically the impact on our infrastructure, on our, we have two firefighters on duty and a chief. That's it. The rest is volunteerism, putting up 200 units. We don't know. So that, that makes us, I think, more cautious in our, in our decision-making, and it makes me feel that we should be very careful in what we say we're going to even look into because we want to be aware that there are some significant changes coming to the town. And we haven't experienced them yet, so we haven't experienced anything like this yet. So we have absolutely no basis for comparison, if you know what I'm saying. Nothing to compare this to.
Yeah, so I would certainly encourage you to take a look. That Action Plan Matrix is a good summary of the strategies. If you take a look at it, and if there are, if the boards feel like there's red flags there based off of the development that's coming, then that should be discussed based off the strategies that are there. And so certainly, that's, you know, open for conversation, and we want to include that. If there are things there that you say, "Well, this is development, that strategy no longer makes sense," let's make sure that we talk about that.
Okay. Thank you very much. It's a lot of information. I really appreciate the time coming out here, working with us. Keep on helping us. Thank you. Next, we're going to talk about floods. Just when you thought it couldn't get better. Sure. And thank you, Planning Board, and Molly Sorensen, gotten here. Nice to see you, buddy.
You're correct. I can add to the phone. And everything you just said is absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Good evening. We have a lot of Merrimack Valley Planning Commission here tonight, so thank you for your patience. I am presenting on another plan that we have been working on with Groveland. My name is Hannah Mogensen. I'm also with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. And over the last 18 months, we've been working with Groveland to update their hazard mitigation plan. This is part of a larger regional plan update. It's the Merrimack Valley Region Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. And so I'm here tonight to tell you a little bit about the plan itself. I want to talk about highlights that have taken place as part of Groveland's update. And then I also want to share with you where this is available for the board and also for the general public to view the plan and comment on it. We just today kicked off our public comment period, and it'll be open for a month. So briefly, what is a hazard mitigation plan? This is essentially a plan that outlines a community's strategy to reduce loss of life and property that may come from the occurrence of natural hazards in your community. The Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, does require that every community in the country has a hazard mitigation plan and then conducts an update every five years to ensure that that plan stays relevant. We conducted the first regional hazard mitigation plan back in 2008, which Groveland was a part of. And then we completed the last update in 2016. You will see that the plan says 2015, but it was formally adopted, which starts our time on that plan in 2016. Having said that, it does mean that we are well past that five years that we need to do the plan update. So we have been actively working to get this plan update done as quickly as possible so we can be back in compliance. There are some benefits of a plan. The first is that going through this process provides a comprehensive assessment of risk for your community. So you understand where are your vulnerabilities when it comes to natural hazards. The second is that it outlines a roadmap to try to minimize that risk. So it sets up a series of actions or plans your community can take over the next five years to try to reduce that vulnerability. The last thing, and I think that's something that our communities are very excited about, is it puts you in good standing to be able to apply for federal grants that can support your non-emergency projects. This includes things like your hazard mitigation grants, your Building Resilient Infrastructure Community Grants, as well as your flood assessment grants and others that come down from FEMA. So our communities have not been able to apply for those for the last few years. We want to make sure they're back in good standing so that you are able to leverage that funding. As I mentioned, this is a regional plan update. So we have 10 communities that are going through this plan update with us, including Groveland. We wanted to make sure that this is really, speaks to the needs at the local level. So we've been working very intimately with each of our communities to update this at the local level. But we've also been kind of zooming out on a more regional level so we can think about hazards as they apply across our boundaries and across our region, and we can develop strategies that might overlap with multiple communities as well. Here's a quick overview of what we've been up to the last 18 months. We've been very busy. We formed our local planning teams. These are groups at the local level that were really responsible for helping us to advance this planning process. We then reviewed our 2016 plan. We were not starting from scratch. We had a really good basis that we could move off of. After reviewing that plan, we identified a few locations we needed to conduct an update. The first in step three is assessing those natural hazards, especially as we are seeing changes in the amount of rainfall we're experiencing and other of our natural hazards. We knew we needed to reassess them and figure out what are the impacts we're seeing today regarding these natural hazards. The second step was to inventory our critical assets, so the things in our community that allow us to function on a regular basis. Those emergency management centers, our hospitals, our grocery stores, the things that are really essential to us in our everyday functioning. In step five, we overlaid the two, overlaying where our natural hazards occur and where our critical resources were, to understand where are the points of the greatest vulnerability for our communities. Using that information, in step six, we created an action plan to try to address that vulnerability. And in step seven, we set a maintenance plan to try to achieve it and work towards it next five years. We are now in step eight, community engagement. We are almost to the end here, which basically means we're at a place where we're finally able to bring this to our communities and our towns and say, "This is what we've created. Please give us insight. Let us know if this aligns with what you're thinking and what else we can add to bolster this." After our public comment period, we will look to finalize our plan and ultimately bring it back to our communities, who we will ask to adopt the plan. This will be done through your Board of Selectmen through a vote. And similar to the hazard production plan, you are not beholden to anything that goes in the plan. It is a roadmap. It is guidance for you. If at the end of the five years, you do not do the list of goals you've set forth, all you do is you reassess, you tell us where you're at in the process, and you can develop new goals. So it's, it's very generous. It just wants you to set that plan ahead of you. So now the fun part. Here are some updates for what's been happening in Groveland. I'm sorry, my name is, my, my face is covering that, but it's Groveland's Local Hazard Mitigation Planning Team. So this is basically the team in Groveland who has been doing the heavy lifting with us and helping to update this plan. Really, this has been led by Rebecca and Annie, so big thanks to those two, as well as the many other folks you see listening on your plan here. They have been instrumental in many community meetings and giving us a lot of input. The one thing I do want to call attention to is you can see that there is a lot of diversity in terms of the folks that are coming and contributing to the plan. We have a lot of different departments all across your town that have been really essential in this, and we felt like it's given us really good feedback into the plan itself. This group is been, has been really key in gathering information, reviewing data, convening our stakeholders, developing our strategies and goals, reviewing our plan, and ultimately will lean on them to help us with coordinate the plan adoption as well. So once we had this plan in place, the first thing we did, as I mentioned, was to assess our natural hazards. These are events that threaten lives, property, and assets. And because they are often connected to weather and climatic patterns, they can be predicted. So the Massachusetts State Hazard Plan outlines 15 possible hazards that can occur in Massachusetts. What each of our planning teams did is they reviewed each of these 15 hazards, and they assessed them based on the location, so where in the community they occur and how much of the community can they occur in. They assessed them on the severity and extent, so the magnitude and the duration at which we're experiencing these events. The previous occurrence by using best available historic data, and also future probability by using climate projections and best available climate data. Using all of these four and doing a big module to assess them, Groveland has identified their hazard risk rating of these 15 natural hazards. So you can see, the team elevated four natural hazards into the high category. This includes inland flooding, drought, severe winter storms, and invasive species. They've identified five hazards in the moderate risk category. This includes our hurricanes and tropical storms, high winds and thunderstorms, extreme temperature, wildfire, and our coastal and riverine erosion. Three in the low hazard category, earthquakes, tornadoes, and landslides, and two which they identified to not be applicable to Groveland. That would be coastal flooding and tsunamis. Once we had this vulnerability in hand, we turned to update our community lifelines. Those are those critical assets that we need to function here in Groveland. We considered a range of different factors and used a list that was first created in 2016 and then updated for this current plan. And this included things like our emergency management facilities, our police stations, our fire departments, our emergency evacuation routes, our hospitals, healthcare centers, grocery stores, utilities, all of those main things we really need. We took that full list and we integrated it into a series of maps. The first one, I'm going to zoom in here for you a little bit. Still, it's small. I promise on the plan, you'll see it in big scale. This basically, all of the little points are those critical facilities that are there within Groveland. And we overlaid it with a series of climate data. This included things around flooding, like our hurricane surge, as well as our firm map, so where our flood plains are. We also looked at historic hurricane tracks, locations we've experienced earthquakes and tornadoes. We looked at change, our current heat index, where we're seeing hotter parts of our community, as well as slope instability and potential locations for landslides. This, of course, was also with some of our basic regional data, like our average snowfall and our intense, our wind data, as well as our precipitation data. As you can see, there's a lot going on here, but it was really hard to figure out exactly where the risk was occurring. So what we did is we created a composite map that actually overlaid all of those hazards. So you can see our composite map here. The colors on the map that are darker orange and even speckles of red along the river indicate that those are locations where we have compounded occurrence of natural hazards. So we might be seeing our hurricane flood inundation, as well as our flood plains, as well as our slope instability. So these are locations where we could get multiple hazards, and therefore, they're likely more vulnerable locations in our community. We also wanted to include our future projections of what, what our changes in climate are also going to be impacting us. The best available data in terms of climate data is mostly around flooding, around heat, and also around precipitation. So those are the three things that we mapped on these more regional maps. And it kind of just shows to everyone that we did take a lot of this data in mind. You can, of course, read that in the plan too. So once we had our maps, once we had, we knew kind of where the hazards were occurring and where our resources were, each of our teams developed a set of challenge statements. These, these challenge statements look to identify the hazard that was occurring, the problem that it caused, and ultimately, the risks that it was posing to the community. Groveland developed a very robust set of challenge statements. These included a number of natural hazards and spoke to a diversity of challenges in the community. They include things like heavy precipitation and flooding, which can cause problems with stormwater management, especially for outdated or undersized systems. Extreme precipitation or lack thereof that can impact water supply as well as the water quality in Groveland. We have drought, which can have secondary impacts on brush fire and the increase in invasive species, as well as severe winter storms, which constrain emergency responses, especially because we don't have an official shelter location within town. The team also identified invasive insect species and plant species, which can deteriorate native species health and cause things like downed utility lines and road closures, as well as possible secondary impacts like erosion, brush fires, and landslides, which can cause when we have native vegetation that is kind of eroded away from these invasive species. They also identified a series of extreme storm events, which can cause downed power lines and road closures, putting a strain on emergency responders, as well as winter storms, which can pose a risk due to snow storage and pollutant runoff. And lastly, is even though this is not a natural hazard, our aging building infrastructure is very susceptible to all of these natural hazards that we're speaking of, which causes a strain financially and as well as public safety to the community. So we did a lot to identify where our challenges were, and then the team turned that over and started thinking about strategies. And as part of this, they developed a mitigation action plan. Now, I'm only showing three of these actions here. There's actually 13 of them that have been developed and are within the plan. Each of the hazard has its own row here, so we'll just use this first one as an example. If you look at the description of the action here, it tells you a little bit about what the action actually is. In this case, it's complete design permitting and construct improvements to the Johnson's Creek Dam. For each of these actions, we identified the category of the action, so in this case, planning or structural, as well as the hazard that was addressed, and the responsibility or the group or department or person in the community or in the region that could really help to advance that goal. The team also went through and prioritized each of these 13 actions by using a set of 10 criteria. I'm not going to list all the things, but they did include things like financial feasibility, the benefit to public safety and health, as well as property, environmental benefits, as well as the actual capacity that the community has to implement and sustain that action. The timeframe was also identified, short one to two years, medium three to five, or long, greater than five, as well as the cost. And the group identified potential resources or funding that could support that action. Lastly, under the project status update in the second to last column, you can see where the project is currently and what they're looking to advance over the next five years. So this is kind of just a snapshot of each of these potential actions. Like I said, there's 13 of them in the plan. You can review those. A lot of them do talk about, or I should say, all of them do address the challenges that were identified by the community. And a lot of them have to do with flooding and precipitation. As I know, that's something in recent years that's been really front of mind for us. So that was a quick overview of some of the highlights. This is a 300-page document. It is very long. Again, that's 10 communities, so please use the table of contents. You'll be able to find everything related to Groveland and really key in on those points of interest. This has been posted on the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission website, and we'll be working with Rebecca to get this on the Groveland municipal website or a link to it as well. It was just posted today, and it will be available until June 28th. So we really encourage everybody to go review it. And you can find on our website detailed instructions on how you can submit public comment. There's also phone number listed. If you call it, you'll get me. I'm happy to talk with you more about the plan as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you as well. So you said it'll be available until June 28th? And at what point does the town have to make a vote?
Oh, great question. Thank you. So public comment will be open until June 28th. At that point, it will probably take about one to two weeks to integrate any comments and finalize the plan. Then we're completing, we've decided to opt into the process that's called approval pending adoption, APA. And so basically, what it means is that we'll bring our plan to the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, MIMA, and to FEMA, and they'll review the plan first. And when they say, yep, your plan is good, then we'll bring it back to our communities. We do it that way so that you don't have to approve a plan. And then if MIMA has changes, we'll have to bring it back to you to approve a second time. Ultimately, it can take about one to two months for MIMA and FEMA to review. So we'd likely look to bring this back after your summer recess in the early fall.
Thank you. Ed, do you have questions?
Yes. Is there any federal money available from FEMA to correct some of these problems? For instance, like the generator at the police station? Or for signboards or anything that we could purchase? If we have a problem where they could bring those, the highway could bring them out and block off the roads, barricades of some sort. Can you just run down what's available?
Yeah, absolutely. So FEMA has about seven federal available grant programs that can address a whole range of natural hazard-related projects. So a lot of the, some of those are big infrastructure, like being able to apply for a lot of outdated water infrastructure, roadways. But a number of them are smaller grants that you can apply for, for things like education or signage or communication, as well as generators. They have a whole generator program. So the hazard mitigation grant funding could be a really good fit for some of those things you mentioned.
Thank you.
Jason? Becky? No. I think we're set unless somebody from the audience has a question or two. I think everybody's been overwhelmed.
I know. A lot of information.
A lot of Merrimack Valley planning.
I know it is. I think I'm the last one tonight, so we'll stop there. But I thank you all.
Truly appreciate your time, your expertise, and your assistance. Thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you for having me.
You're welcome. So going to move on through the agenda. Next on our agenda is a letter from the Council on Aging, which I'd like to make sure that everybody has read. And I'd ask whether you wish to discuss, take it under consideration, or come up with a response. So the question is, do you want to discuss, come up with a, put it under consideration, or tailor a response? What's the feeling of the board? Do you want me to read it? If I read it out loud if we wish. So it's, "Good afternoon. This is from our Council on Aging. The Council on Aging Board met this morning and discussed the Board of Selectmen's removal of our amended bylaws from the town meeting warrant. I had shared your letter below with members prior to our meeting as a point of information. We voted to request a meeting between our bylaw committee, a representative from the select board, and a representative from the finance committee, and the town administrator, so that we could all express our concerns and our intent. We feel this would be more productive than taking time to discuss at a select board meeting." As amended, as the amended bylaws have been removed from the town warrant, there's obviously now no great rush to have this meeting, so it would be at the convenience of all members involved in the discussion. If you could coordinate this meeting and express our desire to meet for discussion regarding this subject, we would appreciate it. And it's from Laurel Pucheski, who's here tonight. Hi, Laurel. Vice chairman, member of the bylaws committee. So would we like to discuss this letter? Or do we have a response? It's okay to ask questions as well.
I think their request is reasonable. I think we should probably appoint somebody from the board to go sit in and have a discussion with them on the committee and maybe discuss how the board may choose to accept a warrant going to town meeting moving forward.
Okay. Ed, do you have an opinion?
No, not really.
Becky?
I agree with Jason. I think it's worth hearing it out.
Okay, so if, my only concern would be if we have, I agree with totally being open to meetings and trying to meet with boards and discuss things. I just would like to tread carefully that when one member of our board meets, they can't speak for our board. So all they can do is take in information and tell you, tell whoever's at that meeting what the board has already said in our meeting. So it's, I'm sure it's maybe a good first step, but I would think then after that, there would be a meeting with the full Board of Selectmen to make sure we get everything, you know, straightened out. That's all. But initially, if that's what the board would like, does somebody wish to volunteer?
I'd be happy to.
Jason would be happy to?
Sure.
Ed, do you want to nominate Jason to represent us at the meeting?
Go ahead. No, you can nominate him.
You're going to, or I am?
You can make the nomination.
Okay, I'll nominate Jason to attend this meeting.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Ed. And the purpose of the meeting is to meet as requested with a member of the bylaw committee and with our town administrator. And, oh, we need a representative from the finance committee, so we'd have to wait for them to meet and do that as well. So any more discussion? There be none? All in favor? Four in favor, one absent? I should have said that initially, that we have one member absent. Okay, that's item three or so on our agenda. Next on the agenda is the letter from the Police Department. I'll ask if everybody's had a chance to read through it. Would you like to discuss?
I think it's something that needs to be addressed moving forward so everybody's on the same page. But I think it's important to get some of the parties involved to have a serious conversation.
I guess I look at this, and I'm thinking, I was at this town meeting, and I saw our police officers at the town meeting, as they always are, and was unaware that the two officers were asked to leave the room by another town official. And I feel that that was an overstep, and that needs to be addressed because if we don't all respect departments doing their jobs, police department is doing their job at the town meeting, they're in uniform. If we don't have that respect, I don't know what we have. So I think that we need to address that going forward. That if there's a question regarding personnel that are at a town meeting for a purpose, I think that it should be brought forward to the moderator and the Board of Selectmen and inquired about. I don't think the officers should have been asked to leave the meeting. But that being said, I think that was not respectful and was not appropriate. I do feel that this board, I would hope, would support a motion to recommend that we continue as we always have with a presence from our police department at our town meetings. It ensures that the town meeting is civil. It sends a clear message that this is going to be a civil debate. It's okay to disagree, but you have to do so respectfully and within the appropriate lines. And the town moderator can ask someone to leave the room. As to my knowledge, I think that's the only person that can ask someone to leave the town meeting, unless a crime has been committed, which I'm not aware of. So would this board be willing to vote to recommend that we continue with our practice of having our police chief handle this issue of having officers at our town meeting as we always have had?
As recommended by the chief.
It is his recommendation. Are we going to vote to support it?
I would, absolutely.
So you're making that motion?
So motioned.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any more discussion?
I think we should call everybody in and find out what happened and why.
Because the reason we would do that would be, we have no, what was done was done without our knowledge, so we don't have any authority to undo it. We only have, the only authority we have is to recommend going forward to the town moderator that we do want the police presence at our annual town meeting. I mean, to just call in parties and just go back over what was already done, to me, seems to be another waste of resources as unfortunately, what happened to the officers that were supposed to be attending our town meeting. Their resource was wasted that evening. I don't really want to waste any more resources. Unless the board feels strongly about that, I would say our recommendation is what we go with going forward. Do you support the recommendation?
I support the recommendation, but I think we should go further and find out why this happened.
Do you want to send an inquiry on this?
No, I think that everybody ought to come in and we should discuss it at a meeting. And the...
I'm just, I'm not quite sure how this would work. So we're going to ask the two police officers to come in while on their day off or on duty?
No, you could ask the police chief, you could ask the town moderator, because he runs the town meeting, and whoever else was involved.
To the best of my knowledge, the town moderator was not involved. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
Town moderator was not involved. That's why I'm saying it's, there's, unfortunately, you know, there was a decision made that the town, the police officers did not live in the town, therefore, they should not be in the room. And they were asked to leave.
I think the biggest reason to have that discussion is to make sure it doesn't happen moving forward.
So who would you like to have it with?
Everybody. I think the police chief. Whoever was in charge of dismissing the officers.
Okay, so in addition to our vote, we want to also extend an invitation for these parties to come in? Is that what everybody wants?
It's definitely something I want to make sure that doesn't happen again.
Well, that's what I thought our vote would do. I was hopeful.
I would hope, but I think a discussion between everybody that's going to be involved moving forward would make sure of that.
I agree with Jason. Make sure everybody's on the same page.
Okay, so do you want to vote two motions? Do you want to first, well, we had a motion and a second on just that we are going to recommend and support the police chief's recommendation. So I'll call for the vote on that. All in favor of supporting the police chief's recommendation that we have police presence at our town meetings. We recommend this. All in favor? Okay, and one absent. And the next would be, the board is in favor of inviting in the police chief and the town official who determined that the police officer shouldn't be in the meeting.
And the new moderator.
And the new moderator. And Jada Damar.
If it's something that's common practice for us to do going forward in preparation for our town meeting, I think it would prevent something like this from happening in the future.
Okay, so do we want this on the next agenda?
Sure.
Next agenda? Okay. Okay. Do we need a vote on that? It's a consensus for an agenda?
You need a vote on it.
What?
I don't think you need a vote on it.
I don't think so either. I just, I agree. I agree. Okay. So that has been decided. Now we're going to move on to, ah, nothing more fun than fiscal year 2024 budget transfers. Our town administrator, Rebecca, will guide us through these.
Yes, so as you will see in your packet, I provided you a memo with some information. The finance board had met to review these changes, and they approved at their May 15, 2024, meeting. There was not a lot of requests for transfers, which is a very good sign. We're very excited that that was the case. And the transfer that we did have from one department was something that we did internally. So they had monies in their budget to help support that transfer. And there was only a small amount of money that we had to find elsewhere in the budget to make up for that shortfall. So that was specifically for the fire department. I believe that the fire chief is here, if he wants to speak specifically to the reason for the transfer. But we were able to find monies in his budget, in addition to other areas of the budget, to cover that transfer. So that was for the fire equipment and supplies and the fuel expenses, as well as the fire vehicle and equipment maintenance. So one was for $8,000, the other for $2,000, and the last was for $8,400. And then the other line item that we're looking for a transfer on is the technology line item. This one gives me a little bit of a pause because of the fact that during the budgetary discussion for fiscal year '25, we did reduce the technology line item. It was not an ideal reduction when we were making it during the budget process, but we were trying to be mindful of the fact that a lot of the departments had already, you know, given $1,000 here, $1,000 there. It doesn't really make a big difference when you're talking about the grand scheme of things, but when you're talking down to a department who really only has a $2,000 expense line item, and you're, you know, reducing it to $1,000, it makes a big difference. So we were trying to be mindful and find other areas to reduce by those small amounts in order to make the bottom line work. So we did end up taking a little bit more from the technology line item. And as you'll see now, that is one of the line items that can kind of change because if somebody's laptop no longer works, we need to purchase a new laptop. So there's other things that come into place if we add an additional Adobe license because somebody expires, or we upgrade the plan. Different little things like that add to the budget. And so it's not always, the estimate is what it is, an estimate. So we are looking to transfer $10,000 into the technology line item to finish out the fiscal year. Otherwise, as you'll note in the actual memo, there were a couple of other small transfers that we were able to kind of not really treat as transfers because of the way that we conduct the budget, one of which was the Essex Technical Assessment line item. There was a $30,000 deficit in that line item. But as you'll all recall, back in October, we had to revise our Pennsaukeet Regional School assessment because the calculation errors on an Excel spreadsheet. So we were able to cover that deficit with the Pennsaukeet Regional School Assessment numbers. So that doesn't mean that we need to go through a transfer process, but the monies from the educational line item that were identified for one specific assessment were used for another. But again, because we wrote on the educational line as a whole, we were able to make that adjustment. The Essex Technical Assessment, I will say, is very, very hard to estimate when we're going through the budgetary process. Pennsaukeet Regional School District, they'll give us an assessment. This is your number. The Whittier Regional School District does something similar where they get their numbers from the state, and they'll give us a number based upon their enrollment. The Essex Technical School, because it's a choice school, because it's only for those trades that are not offered at Whittier, their enrollment is never given at a timely manner, so we never really figure out exactly how many students they're accepting. And mind you, just because, you know, you might have three students graduating, that doesn't mean that they're not, they're just going to bring in three students, and they're not going to add somebody to sophomore year or junior year or what have you. So it's not just a, you know, again, a science where you can say, there's three leaving, there'll be three new ones. So that makes it very difficult. So no excuse, obviously, but it's not as straightforward as one would think. The other transfer, quote unquote, would be the part-time wage line in the library. As we all know, we had two individuals who had left their positions over at the library, and so we had to have our page, our pages that we have cover additional shifts because it is a rule with the library to have two people in the building for safety reasons, which we fully support. So they were able to move some things around, and the pages were able to shift their hours, and they were able to make sure that that was the case. Because of that, we were not able to fill the page line. So since those two positions are vacant, we were able to use their salary wages for the pages. And again, the reason we can do that is we voted on the library's wages as a whole, not individually, so we're able to make that shift. But I did want to make a note of that because, again, because of the fiscal year '25 challenges that we had, we did choose not to fund or to leave unfunded the library assistant position in order to balance the budget. So in talking with the library director, we think we'll be in good shape in terms of coverage because we are planning to hire a new youth services librarian, which you'll see on your agenda this evening. But we won't have that additional library assistant positions. But again, understanding the constraints, the library director has made accommodations to make sure that their staff has what they need. And at the end of the fiscal year, if we find ourselves in a situation, we can be aware of that because we are all watching that very closely. So those are the only transfers, quote unquote, that we have. Two of them being legit transfers that require a vote of the board. The other two, we can handle internally. For the additional information from the fire department, the chief is here. And if there's additional information for the technology account, I'm happy to answer that for you.
So the total amount that is being transferred from Employee Group Health Insurance, account 1001-193-54000, 054, is $18,400. And from the fire department, from fire drill wages, account 1001-220-51401, 051, is $10,000, for a total of $28,400. Can I have a motion to transfer from for those?
So motioned.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Ed. Any discussion? Okay, we're voting just on the transfer from, all in favor? Unanimous, one absent, four in favor. Transfer to, Technology Computer Hardware Maintenance and License Fees, account 1001-155-52000, 052, $10,000. For the fire department, Fire Equipment and Supplies, 1001-220-55000, 055, $8,000. File Fuel Expenses, 1001-220-56500, 055, $2,000. Fire Vehicle and Equipment Maintenance, 1001-220-57002, 057, $8,400, for a total of $28,400 transferred to these accounts. Can I have a motion for that?
So motioned.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Ed. Any discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Yep.
Four in favor, one absent. Okay, this is done. We'll move on. Next is the Groveland Select Board Policies. I believe the town administrator pulled out a template of what we had from before. Am I correct? Do you want to take over from here?
Yes, that's correct. So at the last...
Thank you.
At the last select board meeting, we had mentioned about changing the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board to update the name. In addition to that, we had mentioned making a slight modification to the existing public comment policy as well. So in going through those policies, we had also, throughout the year, had made comments about how we were not following them and about how, you know, the minutes were supposed to be under correspondence in the meeting prior to, and then we just started to implement that policy, having recognized that we were not. So I went through and took the liberty of taking a look at what the board had originally proposed, I want to say, two years ago in terms of some of the initial mission statement, purpose, and then as well as the code of conduct that would apply not only to the Select Board, but also to all town elected and appointed officials. And that was something that, that both select board member, Catherine Ellis and Naves, had looked at and had consulted and received language from Maya. So that was something that we included. And then I took out the policies that, again, were not necessarily, we were not following or were no longer relevant, so to speak. So if you take a look at, you know, the remote policy with the latest legislation, we're able to participate remotely. We could put remote back, but there were other stipulations within the policies that really made it, you know, there was, we don't necessarily, because of Zoom and Teams and whatnot, the remote participation is no longer by telephone. So there were just outdated policies in that regard. And then, so those were taken out and the ones that remained were the resident and public comment as well as the visitor code of conduct and the disposition of surplus goods and equipment that were valued less than $10,000. So I just figured it was a good time to comprehensively look at them as a whole. The board wanted to do that. If not, then we can focus solely on just updating the title as well as maybe addressing the public comment section. And then the only other item that I, I hope that the board will address is, I completely forgot about the financial policies. The financial policies do also refer to the board as the Board of Selectmen, so I would like to receive permission to update that policy as well to just refer to the board as the Select Board, to be consistent across the board.
Okay, so on one hand, you're asking for both from the board to just update the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board in the financial policies and in the other, all the town policies?
Yes.
Okay. And then in addition, the policies before us, some are, we just have, well, we have a mission statement and then we have policies that would apply to all elected and appointed board and committee members.
Correct.
And we already had a code of conduct for visitors?
Yes.
And that's unchanged, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then we have the public comment policy that has in addition to it that department head, staff boards, and committees should use our agenda instead of public comment.
Correct.
It's reasonable.
Which is essentially something that was already in there as the discussion of individual personnel issues will strictly be prohibited. So it was, again, a policy that we were not necessarily carrying forward, but for clarification purposes, I added the additional line, number 13.
Okay. So do we wish to discuss all of these now, or have you read them through at least? I mean, I, Jason and I, we've read them through too many times. So it would be Ed and Becky perhaps that haven't had a chance to really look at it at length, although it looks like pretty much the same old thing.
I read it all this weekend. I didn't have any critiques. It seems thorough. The public comment part, that was just added, definitely makes sense.
Ed?
I just have a comment on D, the last sentence in D. Not to be interrupted by speaking, but by a call to order for the correction of a mistake. That, that's duplicate of what's, what's under Robert's Rules of Order. That's covered under Robert's Rules of Order that you do a, you can interrupt to correct a mistake. So it's a duplicate of what, what is already, one of the regulations that we have to follow.
I would agree. I mean, most of these are kind of, they're just phrased the same way as Robert's Rules, but I guess, I mean, you've, you've been around on boards longer than other people and for new board members, I don't know that they're all taking out Robert's Rules. I'm reading that this might be a, a nice shortcut for them to, if they wonder where this comes from, you're right, it comes from Robert's Rules. It's redundant, but it's just picking out the highlights, I guess, if so...
And it may be, it may be important to, if you're going to leave it in here, to spell out a mistake. And a mistake is not if some member of the board says that the moon is made of green cheese. That's not a mistake. It's a mistake in the fact that there would be maybe two motions on the floor or something of that nature. But if a member makes an outlandish comment about the moon or what have you, that's not a mistake. That's, that's an opinion, it's covered under the First Amendment, but it spells out in Robert's Rules of Order, it's a mistake of procedure or something that wasn't properly followed or a call out of order of a gender item or something of that nature.
Okay. I'm not seeing the word mistake anywhere in here. So I'm thinking you're concerned that somebody will...
It isn't.
Where are we looking at the word mistake? Under D? You said D.
It's under D and it should have another letter.
That's, if you read the Robert's Rule of Order, that is the...
It's under A.
It's under A, okay.
It's under D.
Under A subtitled D. No, I'm still not seeing, where are you in this that you're finding this?
It's on the third page.
Thank you, that would be more helpful. Has everybody found it before me? Okay, I'm looking at...
Right here.
Mission Statement?
Right here.
Two, and Code of Conduct?
D, last sentence in D.
Yeah, deconduct of board members at meetings. A board member shall, you'll see that.
I'm still missing this somehow, D.
Page 61 if you're scrolling.
I don't have page numbers.
Oh.
Okay, so what, code, are you under code of conduct or what?
Right here, Kathy.
What category? Let me see, where were we? Not to be, I called order. Oh, for the correction mistake. Conduct of board members, a board member shall, oh, under not be allowed... That is strange, let me see. The call to order. Yeah, I think, yeah, I mean, the, the, this is meant to be that you don't interrupt somebody except for a call to order because procedurally something's wrong, not because they said the moon is made of green cheese. It uses the word mistake, but if you read it in the context, its meaning is not to continually interrupt people, to say, you're wrong, that's not green cheese. It's meant only to interrupt if you feel procedurally there's been an error in the meeting. Like, for example, someone's made a motion to table and someone starts talking. You're saying, I'm sorry, someone tabled and seconded, there's no more discussion. You have to vote the motion to table. Would be a mistake if the discussion continued past that point and someone could call that a mistake. I think, it's a procedural word. I don't feel that it's meant to be infringing on someone's free speech or the ability to say, the moon is green cheese, or whatever you wish. I feel it's just kind of trying to just say, you don't interrupt people unless there's a procedural issue in what's going on.
And like we said before, we're bound by state laws, federal laws.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Correct, and this is just kind of encapsulating it into a code of conduct, that's all. It's not rewriting, it's not changing anything, certainly, but it's just making it known. I mean, to me, it's, it's not a big deal. Most towns have this in their policies. It just, we have a code of conduct for visitors. I don't see why we shouldn't have a code of conduct for those of us that are on boards and committees. We should have to behave appropriately. So do we want to make a motion to accept this draft as written? And to also, can we make it a double motion to change the Board of Selectmen to Select Board where necessary in the, in the town policies, in all town policies? Make it simple for our town administrator?
So motioned.
I'm glad I'm making the motion. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Do we have any more discussion? Certainly, the policies are a fluid document. So as you see things that maybe don't come across properly or misunderstood, we can certainly revisit and change it. That's the beauty of policies, we don't go through town meeting, just go through our board. So call for a vote? All in favor? It's four in favor and one absent. Okay. Next on the agenda. So we have a list of folks that are up for reappointment and then a list of vacancies. And this is just informational at this point, we're not voting on this?
Yes, it's just informational. I was going to ask if the board would like me to reach out to the individual board and committee chairs and let them know that their, those members who are listed in the first chart are up for appointment and whether or not those individuals would like to remain in their role. And if they do not, then we can list them as vacant and we can advertise a group list to residents for those looking to join any boards or committees so that they know which ones are available. And then also, just to point out as part of the memo about the discrepancy between the finance board terms and how there was a switch in the terms for some reason between different boards and administrations, myself included, where we made all of the board members expire within three years, but it should have been three years for three, two years for two, and two years for one. So we're looking to make that correction so that it will stay with the seat so in the future, it will expire correctly so that the seat will always either be a three-year seat, a two-year seat, or a one-year seat. Even though they have names associated with them, it's not really the person, it's the seat. So we just want to correct that. So that was the only other thing that we wanted to call to your attention.
So is the board in favor of having the town administrator reach out to the chairs of these various committees and boards and let them know who's up for reappointment, see if they wish to be reappointed? And if not, compile a list of vacancies that are open for the public to sign up for? Or, yes, are we in favor of letting town administrator move forward on this?
Absolutely.
Everybody? We have consensus.
Yes, and on, I hope that the board will allow me to put that on the agenda for the June 24 meeting so that we can have that list available for the board to vote. And I would be able to then turn around and get the appointment letters out to the appropriate individual so that they can then work with the town clerk in order to get appointed and also complete all of their ethics and other requirements.
Okay, great. That sounds perfect. So we're down to agenda item eight, and that's the Recreation Committee. And I see that Steve Baker is here to talk to us about, it's under our purview to reduce the member requirements from seven to five members. Has everybody had a chance to review that? Steve, you can, I guess, jump to the podium at the front, front of the row now. Thank you. Thank you for waiting.
So Steve Baker, Five Sunset Circle, currently the chair of the Recreation Committee. As the agenda says, we're looking to ask the board to reduce the size of the Recreation Committee from seven down to five. I've been on the board for, since 2022, and during that time, we've kind of always struggled with quorum. I think in the last year or so, we've only been able to meet three or four times just because of, you know, the, we have five active members right now. And if we're missing a couple of people, then obviously we can't meet. There's a lot going on, right? There's a lot of CPA projects, there's a lot of just things that the board would like to be able to do that we're kind of not able to get quorum to meet. We feel like we have enough resources to be able to do things with five members and it would just make it a lot, I think it would give us the opportunity to give the Board of, the Select Board a lot more feedback about some of the things that are going on if we can actually meet and, and, you know, get things done.
So the request is for the Board of Selectmen to vote to reduce the Recreation Committee from a seven-member committee to a five-member committee because currently with seven members, they need five members present to have a quorum. And I'm guessing you can always get four, and it's that fifth member that sometimes is difficult.
Well, we need, if we have seven, we need four, right, to meet, so...
We need four?
Yep.
Okay, you want to go to five, so you're having trouble getting four?
At times, we have, yeah. Now, we've got, we've got some new members on the board over the past, probably, I don't know, six months or so. And so it's been a little bit easier. We've actually been, the last two meetings, I would say, we've had no issue. But I know as the summer gets here and people are on vacation, we're going to be right back where we were.
So would we be bumping people off the committee?
Nope, we have five members right now, so...
Oh, so we have two vacancies anyway? Okay, so we're not knocking anybody off? Okay, good.
And we would still keep the alternate members, because there's two alternates as well.
So do the alternates go to meetings and then they only vote if the...
Well, they're vacant right now, but...
Yeah, we haven't had them filled in the entire time I've been on the board.
Okay, so do, we don't need to vote on alternates, though?
No, you don't. I just meant that if there's a concern about reducing it to five, there's, could be a potential to have seven without giving you a quorum issue because of the fact that you're reducing it.
I got it, yeah. Ed, do you have questions or concerns about reducing it to five?
No, not at all.
Jason? Becky?
No, makes sense.
Somebody wish to make a motion to reduce the membership of the Recreation Committee from seven members to five members?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we reduce from seven to five for the Recreation Committee.
I'll second that.
And that's to be effective as of our vote. Okay. Any more discussion?
I don't know, just a point of order on that.
Sure.
I'm not sure Jason can, he's on the Recreation Committee.
Oh, Jason.
Uh-oh. Busted.
Okay, so let's begin this process one more time. Ed, would you like to make the motion?
I do.
Okay, then...
I'll second that.
And Jason will be rescusing himself. Okay, all in favor of reducing the Recreation Committee from seven members to five? Three in favor, one recusal, and one absent?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good call. So now we're going to move on to appointments and resignations. We have here an appointment request for Evangeline Delman of Topsail Message... We have here an appointment request for Evangeline Adelman of Topseal, Massachusetts, as a Youth Services Librarian effective June 3rd, 2024. This is a non-exempt 37.5 hours per week position at a rate of $28.40 per hour. Can I have a motion to appoint Evangeline?
A motion to appoint.
Evangeline, yes. And can I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor of appointing Evangeline Adelman of Topseal, Massachusetts, as a Youth Services Librarian? It's four in favor, one absent. Next, we have to appoint Max Carducci of Groveland, Massachusetts, as a Seasonal Groundskeeper for the Highway Department effective June 17th, 2024. This is a non-exempt part-time position for up to 19 hours per week at a rate of $18 per hour. Somebody wish to make our motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
To appoint Max?
To appoint for discussion.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion?
We have, we want to appoint three part-time positions, 19 hours a week for the Highway Department. One, this individual at $18 an hour. And the next one, next two, at $17 an hour. Why the difference? That was question number one. Question number two, generally when we make appointments like this, we have a background information on the individual, so that we can make a, make a good decision. And I, I didn't see any on this one unless, unless it just wasn't included in the package.
So, in regards to the first question, Max is actually returning. He worked for us last year, so after having conversations with the Highway Superintendent when he was still in his position, we felt as though giving him a dollar increase for returning to the role, and the work that he performed the last season warranted an increase, as opposed to what we were advertising the position as for $17. If the board would like to make the change, we can make the change for all of them to be 18 or 17. But like we had mentioned, we wanted to reward Max and thank him for returning. And again, since he knows the role, knows what he needs to do, know what's expected of him, we thought we would give him additional incentive to stay with us. As for the information, I can include the resumes and the job application. Some of it has sensitive information, so I was trying to keep that out of the packets. The packets do go online, and they become public records, so I can redact all of their information. These applicants are in high school, so it has email addresses, telephone numbers, et cetera, for just general information. But I understand where the board member is coming from, so I can include that information moving forward.
And maybe, maybe you could explain on the, the non-exempt positions, which, and the individual we just appointed at the library, also non, not exempt. I look at a non-exempt as somebody not, it doesn't get benefits out of the town, no sick leave, no medical benefits like that. But am I wrong on that one?
No, it's more so for the federal labor laws. So if you're non-exempt, that means that you are only allowed to work a certain amount of hours. Anything above that, those hours is considered overtime. And if you're an exempt employee, you're technically a salaried employee. So if you're a salaried employee, you, you work as many hours as you need in order to get the job done. So, the difference between an exempt and non-exempt is, is to make sure that we're telling the employee, "You are only supposed to work these amount of hours. If you exceed those hours, due to permission given to you by your supervisor, you are entitled to additional compensation under the state, state and federal laws."
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions, discussion? Okay, can I call for a vote on Max Carducci as a Seasonal Groundskeeper for the Highway Department, effective June 17th, 2024? In favor? Four in favor, one absent. Next is to appoint Tyler Lewis of Groveland, Massachusetts, as a Seasonal Groundskeeper for the Highway Department, effective June 17th, 2024. This is a non-exempt part-time position for up to 19 hours per week at a rate of $17 per hour. Can I have a motion for that?
A motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, seconded by Becky. Any discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor to appoint Tyler Lewis of Groveland, Massachusetts, as Seasonal Groundskeeper? Four in favor, one absent. Next is to appoint Theodore Cludier of Groveland, Massachusetts, as Seasonal Groundskeeper for the House of Highway Department, effective June 26th, 2024. Non-exempt part-time position, up to 19 hours per week at a rate of $17 per hour. Can I have a motion for that?
Motion, motion to approve the appointment.
Okay, can I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Becky. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor of appointing Theodore Cludier of Groveland as Seasonal Groundskeeper? Four in favor, one absent. Item 13, to accept the resignation of Larry McKellany from the Council on Aging, effective May 28th, 2024. I read Larry's letter. Hi. I'm glad that you're going to keep working on the Friends of Council on Aging. So appreciate that. Appreciate the time you put in on the Council on Aging as well. We're losing, we're looking for good volunteers. Can I have a motion to accept the resignation?
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation.
Who did we decide? I was wondering which one you were, I was like, I was trying to look up and be covertly looking. Well, thank you, we appreciate it, and thank you for coming to our meeting, and it's nice to see your face. You were the last one, we appreciate, we, well, thank you, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
You got some tough shoes to fill.
I think he's going to be just fine. Thanks so much, have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Laurel. I wasn't sure, you know, it's like, I don't want to, I don't want to call people out, and then I thought, yeah, it's probably one of them. Okay, anyway, we are on to accepting the resignation of Larry McKellany from the Council on Aging, effective May 28th, 2024.
Yep, I've already made a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so a motion seconded, all in favor?
Yep.
And I thank you very much for your service, and we look forward to you.
And he's done a great job.
Yes. And he's going to continue on the Council, Friends for the Council on Aging, so we're not losing him completely. Next is an appointment for Linda Workman of Wharf Drive, as a Council on Aging member, effective May 28th, 2024, until June 30th. Wait a minute, that's got to be 2024, right? Oh, so that it goes all the way around? Okay, so that year is right.
So remember when we were talking about the Finance Board and making sure?
Yeah, I kind of missed all that.
It stays with the seat, so we need to make sure that the seat is a three-year term, so that person's only going to be filling that for the next.
May 28th, 2024, until June 30th, 2025, so all the way to next year. Okay, can I have a motion for Linda Workman of Wharf Drive? Council on Aging member.
Yeah, make a motion, Linda Workman.
A second on that?
The Council on Aging, effective today, May 28th.
All right, I'll second that. And seconded by Becky, any discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Yep.
Now, we're moving on to minutes. So, Becky, you can't vote on either of these?
No, I'm going to abstain from both.
Okay, so, has anybody had a chance to review the minutes? They were provided at the last agenda from March 25th and April 29th of this year.
The minutes look to be in order, March 25th, I move for passage.
I'll second that.
There being no discussion, all in favor? Three in favor, one abstention, and one absent. Okay, next are the minutes of April 29th, 2024.
They also look to be in order, and I move for passage.
I'll second that.
Call for the approval, all in favor?
Yep.
Three in favor? Abstentions, one, and one absent. Okay, so the minutes are done, now we're into unfinished business. Trash and Recycling Committee, that's Rebecca and I. It has been meeting once a month, making really good progress, I think, learning a lot. Getting our facts together, looking for ways to reach out and get information to folks without having to provide pages of information. We talked a little bit about how we can't do flyer inserts anymore, because we've outsourced the tax bills. So we were trying to think about small ways to put a little pictorial thing, maybe in the Council on Aging newsletter, library newsletter, things like that, to just raise awareness of the two-barrel limit, which is a big deal, because I feel that people have kind of forgotten about it a little bit. But our current contract does limit you to two 32-gallon barrels. If you need to throw out more, you can, you just need to buy the purple overflow bags that are available here at the Town Hall, at Obashan, I think at Nicole's Variety, and, trying to think of, oh, up by the gas station at the, what is that? The other variety stop. What's that one?
Nicole's Jerry's.
Jerry's, now Nicole's, yeah, Board of Health, yes. So, we're trying to just get the awareness up as we move towards a new contract, because it's become very, very clear to us that the cost of disposal of trash is going to far outpace the amount of money we raise in proposition two and a half percent. So, members of our committee have been sitting in on different webinars and have brought this expertise back. We've had experts come in and speak to us, and the question, the question posed is, "Would you want to pay your neighbor's water bill?" Would you want to pay for your neighbor's water? No, why should you? Why should I pay for my neighbor's water? I'll pay for the water that I use. If I want to take a long, 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 long shower, I will, and I have to pay for that. So, the same with our trash. We're actively looking towards a pay-as-you-throw program. We're certainly going to be putting aspects of that into the request for proposals that will go out. We're actively looking to extend and enlarge the list of recyclables, because our current recyclable list is fairly limited, it doesn't include all one through seven items. We also have, from the Board of Health Chairman, who's now joined up, that he has some expertise in recycling of unusual things like plastic razors and things that we might be able to engage in by putting bins here at the Town Hall, to give people places to dispose of items that perhaps shouldn't go in the trash and shouldn't go on recycling. We're actively working on all these things, all at the same time. And Rebecca, our town administrator, is helping us out tremendously. We're doing everything we can, and we're doing it as fast as we can. So, I think there's just a lot of work getting done very quickly. You know, at the last meeting, you approved a request for a grant, correct? And that's going to help with technical expertise. I'm still trying to get more information from Rebecca about a grant that comes due on, if we apply for it by June 12th, to perhaps be able to start a small composting pilot program here, if we could fully fund it. Maybe we could do a lottery and let people participate, see how it goes. Because the biggest thing that I think we're learning is that when you put things in the trash, you're not throwing it away, it's just going to a different place. And the places that they're dumping the trash are diminishing and becoming more expensive. So, the more ways we can reuse, redirect things that ordinarily would even go into recycling, the better for us. So, anybody out there in the public that's watching that has some great ideas, we're open to everything. Anybody can come to our meetings. I think we chose the third Tuesday of each month during the summer. We usually meet about 6 o'clock, anybody's welcome to come and jump in. And that's about it for now. We'll bring forward more information in the form of a more structured update. But this was just run-of-the-mouth. And then we have Pennskeet Regional District Regional Agreement on here, because?
Oh, questions on, back to trash.
Oh, back to trash, go ahead.
Questions?
Sure.
After the last meeting, when they brought it up about the trash, when does the contract run out?
I believe at the end of next year, am I right? 2025, or is it 2026?
Is it fiscal year, or is it calendar year?
So, it will be FY '27.
I'm sorry?
By fiscal year, so not this year, not next year, but fiscal year '27.
Right.
And some of the questions that I got was, if, if they do a pay-as-you-throw, would it be, would it be bags, would it be barrels? Because the question was, if it was barrels, where do you put your sticker? And if it's bags, then they won't be able to use the arm on the side of the truck, which will take them longer. Because now, when they, when they pick up the trash, if somebody has a barrel that they can dump it correctly, they pick it up with the arm and dump it in the, dump it in the truck. But if it's a, if it's bags, then they have to physically get out of the vehicle. So, that was the thing.
Okay, so I can address that before you go on. So, it's a twofold approach. One is to provide the carts, which would be the barrels, and then you purchase the bags that go into the barrels. So, what it's, what it is doing, you raised the, the comment about the ballot vote back in 1990. I think there was one in 90 and 92, like two years apart. Two override votes, they weren't ballot questions, they were overrides, because we didn't have the money to keep up with the escalating cost of trash. So, if you think that right now, we're actually keeping pace with the cost of our trash contract, we are not. We're only able to fully fund the trash contract this year, probably because, I think the Whittier assessment went down. We had a dip in an assessment that freed up additional money. But honestly, when we say that taxes are restrained at two and a half percent, we're talking about, is it $300,000 or $400,000, the two and a half percent ballpark? 400?
For increases per fiscal year?
Yes, how much is about two and a half?
It was 11% increase from last fiscal year.
No, no, I'm talking about the amount of money that we have additionally to fund all the increases in our budgets.
Oh, it's two and a half percent plus new growth, and then any state aid that we get.
Right, but the two and a half percent, is that about 400, 500?
Yes, it's about $450,000.
$450,000, and new growth was about?
It was only about 110, and that was an estimate.
110, we've had surprisingly low growth, I know. So, altogether, we're talking $500,000, $600,000 to try and keep up with the increases in everything. And trash is projected to outpace two and a half percent by a lot. So, what this would do for taxpayers would be to put it into their control, about how much do you want to spend throwing out your trash? If you're really working at it, you'll probably be using maybe one bag a week. Okay? That's that. You know, the, the funding of the pickup would still be in the tax rate. But what we would try to do is, by pricing the bags correctly, avoid a general override. Because the problem with these general overrides is, the year you vote them, sure, they go to the school, or they go to fund your trash. But as people found out in 1992, the trash override they voted in 1990, there it is, back on the override again. And I think people were fairly upset, and rightfully so. We just voted an override for trash, now we have to vote another one? Why? And so we're trying to take trash out of that override, if possible. That's, that's what we're working towards. So, you would, you would get the cart, and then you would purchase the bags. And we're hoping to provide the carts, and people don't pay for them.
You purchased the cart, and you?
We're hoping the town will be, will be able to purchase the carts for the new contract. Yes.
Which is a logistical problem, because if you purchase a cart, where is the individual homeowner going to put their sticker? Because if the truck driver has to open up the barrel to see a bag or that has a sticker on it, that's going to slow the, slow them down.
There's no stickers, the stickers don't really work, because people were, in other towns, were stealing stickers, and stickers fall off. The bags, it's a colored bag. So, as the trash is dumped into the trash truck, it's obvious the bags are the colored bags. We can also, through Waste Zero, we can ask to have a camera on the truck, so that we know that the colored bags are being used. The idea is that if we go to the carts, we fully automate the pickup, so that there'll be one person on the truck, which lowers the cost of pickup. Right now, in fact, our town administrator is working to see if we can get a grant for the carts before this contract runs out, because waste management potentially could lower the charge for the pickup if we can automate. Right now, we can't automate, because people have all different barrels out there, and the guy, sometimes he has to get out of the truck, sometimes he doesn't. So, it takes longer, and it takes more manpower.
Other questions that, other questions that people had asked was, if you have to buy, now you're saying you have to buy? buy, now you're saying you have to buy the bags...
Right.
...to throw out. Well, of the eight hundred and somewhat thousand dollars that we're paying for trash, how much of that is going to come back to the taxpayers, or is it going to be used? Is it all going to stay in the budget and used for some other item? Because if it's, if it's not coming back to the taxpayers to defray the cost of the bags, then it's like double taxation, because we'd be paying the eight hundred and somewhat thousand for trash, which might be used for something else, but then we have to buy the bags, which is a, which is a cost. So, it's double taxation. Right now, we're paying it in our taxes, and...
So, again, let me explain, that there's no easy way to do this, and to go and underwrite at the same time that you put this program in would just put an unnecessary burden on the tax rate, and probably force an untimely override. So, if the goal is not to have to go for overrides, to stabilize our tax rates, so that people can say from year to year, my taxes are going up two and a half percent for the most part, that's what I expect, then, right now, I think the cost of pickup is already at like five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, the cost of pickup, cost of labor is going to continue to increase, and will eventually reach the eight hundred thousand mark. It's not, it's not going to get, we're not going to go out and hire ten more people or something. We're a pretty sensible board, I mean, we have really sensible town meetings. I don't see any reason why, if there's a little excess levy left there, we don't have to use it up. Okay? We don't have to tax to the max. Town meeting can vote a budget that doesn't use every dollar. Many towns already do that. They have excess levy available there, so that when something bad happens and you do need to increase taxes, you don't have to go to the ballot every time. So, I think, based on the financial policies that our town administrator is putting in, and the hard work of our financial board, and the hard work of this board and other committees in town, we're working towards a place where we're not at the ceiling all the time, saying that we can't fund this budget without an override. We'd like not to be at that place. So, to have a little excess levy, in answer to your question, as the revenue stream comes in, we'll get a better idea of what the bag sales will do revenue-wise, and, you know, I think an educated public will understand that they don't need to go out and spend every dollar that's under prop two and a half percent, in which case, yeah, you have some savings right there. You don't have to spend every dollar that's available, just like in your home budget. You bring home your paycheck, you say, I'm not going to spend every dollar. We can do the same thing as a town. There's nothing in the rulebook that says, just because the money hasn't been removed from the tax rate, we have to spend it. I think the underwrite that was done years ago definitely forced an acceleration of overrides. I mean, we just, I think for, for planning purposes, it's better for the homeowners to have a stable tax rate than to have one that's going up and down like a ping pong ball. It's hard to set your home budget when you don't know whether the tax rate's going to have an override every year, like we've been dealing with right now. So, excess levy could be a benefit to the town.
So, in other words, in other words, cut to the chase, the money that we have in the budget now for trash, none of it's going to come back to the taxpayers to defray the cost of the pay-as-you-throw program?
Actually, no, you're not listening. What I said is, if we don't need all that money for the trash, it's available up to prop two and a half percent, but we don't have to spend it all. If it's not needed, the tax rate can be set below. There's nothing that prevents us from doing that.
Ultimately, there is not going to be any additional money left in, because our, the rate of the increase far exceeds and outpaces the two and a half percent. So, everything above and beyond the two and a half percent is what we're looking to offset by doing the pay-as-you-throw program.
Well, how do you know what it's going to cost unless it goes out to bid?
It's going to go out to bid.
Yes.
It's going to go out to bid, everything goes out to bid.
Absolutely.
It may come in, it may come in under, but I just think that some of that money ought to come back to the taxpayers.
What money?
And again...
The taxpayer's money.
The eleven percent increase that we only have two and a half percent to cover? That we're going to use the bags to supplement the additional seven and a half percent?
But again, Ed, if there, you don't have to do an underwrite in order to not spend all the money that's available in the tax rate. If it's not needed, then it's good to allow the excess levy to be there for a future need. It's just good financial planning. We've been one of the few towns that's always right at the cap, right hitting our head on the ceiling. And this is a way to start to re-educate the public that with an educated town meeting and educated public, we can make educated decisions. That's a good thing. That's a good thing for the town. So, yes, the money can come back, as long as people understand that you don't need to spend every dollar that's available at the town meeting. The town financial board is extremely conservative. I think this board is fairly conservative, too. Our town administrator is way conservative, very careful on spending. So, I think we have a good setup here, to make sure that we don't spend it on silly things.
Well, I think you answered my question, that it's a double taxation, but...
No, I did not, actually, I did not say that. I said, actually, no, that when the money's not needed for trash, if it weren't needed for other assessments, it would create excess levy, and if the town meeting doesn't spend it, then it doesn't go into the town, to the tax rate.
Well, would you agree that if it was needed for other items, then it's double taxation? Because right now, we're, we're paying it in our taxes, but we may be paying it out of our taxes. So, it sounds to me like...
It's, it's not double taxation, Ed, either, any way you look at it, because it's, it's, if anything, it's avoided cost. It's an avoided cost strategy, so that you avoid the cost of a future override. And the one thing that I think people don't understand about overrides, first, the fact that they're general, so one year they go to trash, the next year they go to something else. The second thing that is most hurtful, I think, to the public, and I think in the case of the Pennsyl County Building Project, this is what really caused people a lot of distress, is that because we only build quarterly, when there's a large override, you don't get your override until the third quarter tax bill. Am I right on that? The third quarter is when the new, the override goes on the tax bill? Third and fourth quarters, with the first year?
With the assessment of the, of the tax rate?
Yes.
Yes.
From the first year. So, in, in other words, an increase that you read in the flyer was going to cost you this much per quarter is now lumped into just two quarters. So, if you're actually paying your taxes, and they're not paid through your mortgage, you hit this large blip that first year, and I think that's very unsettling to people who are on a budget, you know, because you didn't expect that, right? Then it levels out the next year. But again, this is a strategy so that we can start to avoid general overrides that get directed from one place to another, and then we're right back for another trash override three years later. We'd like to not have to go to the public for an override for trash. And that's, that's the goal here. It's not to burden, it's to unburden and to give the taxpayers choices.
Well, you, I got to congratulate you, you've done an excellent job of doublespeak.
Okay, I take that. Doublespeak is not a compliment, so you can say your opinion of what I say, but I'm a trained economist and financialist, and I think what I say has a lot of merit. So, we agree to disagree. Moving on, Pennsyl County Regional School District Regional Agreement is on here.
Yes, you had sent an email and mentioned that you might want to put it on the agenda, so I just put it under older unfinished business in case you had an update.
Okay.
Because I do know that we have not finalized the agreement with the Pennsyl County Regional School District, so we were working with both Merrimack and West Newbury to finalize that. So, that is something that we should put maybe on a future agenda, because we need to understand where we are for the next town meeting.
But I had a question. On the current agreement, I do not think it allows us to be billed for our preschoolers, especially the tuition, the ones their parents that are paying tuition for, and we are being billed for them. And even though, I mean, based on my, I took a little pass at it to see what the adjustment would be, I don't think it would really save us a lot or anything, but I'm concerned that at some juncture, it could, especially with apartments going in. So, we have a preschool right now that is, you can pay for your child to go, and then a small percentage are tuitioned in under special education. But we're being billed for the combined total, and I don't think the regional agreement allows that. So, I thought we could perhaps raise that question, if it's okay with the board members here, to bring it forward, without a new agreement having to be formed. What do you think? Have you read the regional agreement? Anybody? Do you want to table it until the next meeting? And read through the current agreement and see what you think of it? Want to do that? I'm okay with that, too.
I'd rather review it, yeah.
Okay, so, take a motion to table it, and we'll bring it forward.
A second.
Okay. All in favor tabling, next meeting. Okay. So, anything not reasonably anticipated? I got nothing. Okay. Town administrator time.
So, I just have a couple of updates for the board. The highway superintendent replacement, I'm still working with council to discuss the specifics of a reorganization potential. In the interim, we're working on a side letter of agreement with the highway, highway union to have the foreman cover some of the responsibilities of the highway superintendent in the interim. I'm handling the day-to-day administrative functions, such as payroll, bills, et cetera. I've posted the executive coordinator's position and hope to have someone in the role for July first. I've started to transition with the current town planner to take over current duties and responsibilities, so we had established a brand-new email, townplanner@grovelema.com, which will help us establish a more smooth transition for those projects that are currently through the planning process. So, by continuing to copy that email, it'll make it so that when the other email is no longer functioning, the correspondence isn't getting lost, and people understand that they need to direct that correspondence to myself. The planning board also had a meeting tonight, and the current town planner was able to discuss this with them as well, to give them an update. We have posted the conservation agent. It's a part-time position. We have not had any applicants thus far. We are getting a little discouraged with the look, but we're going to continue to advertise the position, and also look at neighboring communities, such as West Newbury and Merrimack, who, I believe West Newbury is looking for a new conservation agent, as well as Merrimack, so maybe there's a potential to collaborate with part-time positions and splitting of hours. We do that with our building commissioner currently, so maybe there's a potential there, just because obviously it's a part-time position, and the hours are not, are not a lot, so to find somebody qualified to fill the position, it's going to be very challenging for us, which it has been in the past, which is why we took the position and tried to mold it into something more, but obviously took too big of a bite of the apple. So, going back to the basics on that one, so hopefully I'll have an update for the board on that. I also wanted to make sure that the board was aware that we have implemented a grants policy. It was part of our financial policy, but it also took things to a different type of organizational structure, such as the pre-application process. So, if any of the departments or boards or committees are looking to apply for a grant, they need to fill out a pre-application form. It's not to add any additional burdens on the individual looking for the grant. We do understand that grants are vital to our ability to function and to supplement the funding that we have for the taxpayers, so we definitely encourage departments to go and seek grants. It's just that a lot of times when you're applying for grants, that you don't understand that there, there might be some long-term repercussions to those monies, whether or not they're supplementing something that we're supposed to take over from an operational side, but we're not setting aside money. If it's an employee, as we've seen with some of the other one, grants we've had, we had a free employee for three years, and then all of a sudden, they got to come on to our budget, and we didn't allocate the money, and that can cause a lot of strain on the budget, once we've made those types of commitments. So, the process is really just to encourage departments to sit down with myself and go over that. Is there a cash match? Is there an article that we need to put forward on town meeting? Do we have to wait? Is there something we can do now, or can we do it later? Is there any long-term maintenance costs and things of that nature? So, that has gone into effect, and it's been pretty well received. Again, I think a little bit of the hiccups are, you know, another form that we have to fill out, but it does help us establish that type of accountability, too, because we approve somebody moving forward with something, and it does cost the town money, you have that form to be like, why would you approve this? Why did we move forward? And the person applying for the grant also has the responsibility to make sure that they're double-checking everything and reading things thoroughly, to say, oh, yes, there is this added cost. Oh, wait, can I help contribute this, because it would help my department move forward? So, it is, it's going to be, I think, a great tool moving forward. It already really has been with one of the more recent requests, which would, you know, definitely something that we should consider in terms of adding additional personnel, but again, we're, we've just unfunded one of the positions, and we cut line items in order to balance a budget. So, is now the right time to be adding personnel? Not necessarily, even if it is a match, or even if there is additional monies coming in through another source. So, it's really hard to make those decisions, but we want to be thoughtful about the way we're doing that, and this process allows us to do that, and give adequate feedback to the departments of why those decisions are being made. It's not because we don't want you to succeed, it's not because we don't see the validity, it's just that we need to be mindful of the, the long-term goal. And look at it from the bigger picture, which a lot of times departments are very, I'm focusing on my department, I'm focusing on my department, but you're one department in a town, and so it's just really important to put that into perspective. On the grant level, as selectwoman Catherine Ellis had mentioned, I am applying for the recycling partnership grant for the recycling totes, so that we can provide those for residents free of charge. I'm hoping to have that submitted next week. These totes will help us move forward with an automated collection, and when we go out to bid, because we had all mentioned that we wanted to go to an automated system, because we believe that they would, there would be some savings there. So, if we can capitalize on getting free recycling totes now, it just makes a lot more sense, so we're moving in that direction. We are going to be submitting a one-stop strap grant for the funding of the Culvert Dam repair on Washington Street. This is the Culvert Dam by VZ Memorial Park. The bricks have started to fall down. The highway department was kind enough to go out and do some more immediate repairs, but obviously, it's not long-term, so we're looking to seek funding for that. We think we have a really good application, because this is upstream from the Uptak Culvert, and the Uptak Culvert, we just received the same funding source, and it also is a major transportation corridor into our neighboring community. So, we do think we have a strong application, and hopefully we'll be successful. We're also submitting a community one-stop grant for mass development site readiness to further the study that was done on 150 Center Street. It would be in the form of RFI, which is a request for, for information, excuse me, a request for interest. So, essentially, now that we have some form of feasibility with some community input, we're looking to see whether or not a developer would even find, or anyone would see that as a, as a valuable piece of property based upon the plan that was put together. It doesn't commit us to any specific plan, it does not commit us to any form of development. It is purely due diligence, getting an understanding of whether or not the plan that we put forward is something that somebody would be interested moving forward with. On that note, that is something that we've been working with for the Economic Development Committee, so we have also been focusing on the Valley Screw property and getting additional information. The chairman of that particular committee, Bill Dunn, has been working with Senator Tar. This was an effort that was started originally when he was a select board member, so we have re-initiated those conversations. We've started talking again to the EPA, as well as Congressman Moulton's office, to see what we can do on the property. Specifically, as we've mentioned at one of the former meetings, there are two liens on the property, one being from Mass DEP, and one being for the EPA, in terms of the monies that they had to invest to clean up the site. If it was done in where most superfront sites were done, we would be applying for Brownsfield monies or superfront sites to clean up the site, but because of the level of contamination and because of the way that this particular property succumbed to that type of contamination, the EPA just went in automatically and cleaned up the site. So, that puts us at a little bit of a disadvantage from other communities that you see utilizing those federal funds. That being said, if we were to take over the property, we would apply for the same funds that they use in order to clean up the property. So, forgiving the liens on the property would be beneficial if the town were to move forward with, with taking the land, taking it off of our overlay, and removing the building, and just capping it, in terms of next steps. That's something for the town to discuss, but it's about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we remain, will continue to see on our overlay, which means that's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of taxpayer money that we cannot use, that sits there, and could go back to the taxpayer and go back to the very conversation that we were just having. So, it is something that's been sitting there for a very long time. There has been no movement, the owner has not been doing anything, the building continues to fall in on itself, it's become a blighted area and a parking lot, which invites all types of unwanted type of activity. So, we're hoping that we'll have successful conversations with both EPA, DEP, as well as Congressman Moulton, and Senator Tar, and, and also, excuse me, Representative Ramos will be present at that meeting as well, to further those conversations. And that was something that we've been working with the Economic Development Committee on, so hopefully, after that meeting, we can have representative from the committee and myself meet with the board and give an update as to how things trans- as to how things transpired and what our next steps will be moving forward. Some of the last items is that we are moving forward with onboarding and time and attendance software. So we currently have Harper's, Harper's payroll system. So we're going to be doing an onboarding type of module, which is a little bit different than what we currently have. We just have DocuSign. So it will make it an even easier-to-use electronic system because it will tie in directly with our payroll system. So it will avoid the steps of re-entering information from one system into another system. And then we'll also be doing time and attendance, which is something that we are currently using a time sheet for. So employees will fill out a time sheet. It will go to their supervisor. The supervisor will sign off. It will go to the benefits and payroll coordinator, and that person will take it and then put it into the system. So there's a lot of room for error, and there's a lot of duplication of efforts, and it can become very convoluted. So this will allow us to do it all online. So an employee will be able to submit their time. It'll still get sent to their supervisor. Their supervisor can take a look. And at the same time, if you wanted to schedule vacation, you could do it the same way through the software. So you could say, okay, I want to take 10 hours of vacation this week. And so when you're submitting your time, you're also submitting your time off request. That will then show on your accrual. So it's a really neat feature for the employees to be able to have that on a one-stop shop, on a dashboard, and still then get carried over to our Harper's payroll system so that we have a benefits coordinator who's not just reading off the list and updating it. There's still the checks and balances. They're still going through the list. They're still validating the hours, but there's not as much transcription from paper to computer to paper to computer. It'll also give us a little bit more of a way to interact with our employees, which we're excited about. As you know, we haven't really had a human resources function here in town hall, at least for the time I've been here, even when I first started in a different department. So now that I'm into the second contract, I'm kind of looking at doing some different things and getting us more in line of where we're supposed to be. So there is like an announcement board, so we can talk about, you know, maybe wellness fairs, walking groups, making sure people have their anti-bullying policy, anti-harassment policy, that the fraud risk policy, their ethics, and those types of things have been updated. So it'll give us a good platform to move forward with that. I did have our meeting, our bi-monthly meeting with the departments this morning, and I did mention the desire for the board to have conversations with the departments and a little bit more of a one-on-one, well, not like a board and department or committee type of setting. They were on board. They thought that the best way to go about it was the initial conversation, which was to add, just like we have on our agenda, department time. And so if a department has an item that they would like to bring before the board, they'll just let me know prior to the meeting. I'll put it under the agenda item. And then if there's nothing, then we'll just say, oh, no department's had any issue. But then they also agreed that they would really like to have, ooh, sorry, I was playing with the clip, joint meetings with the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board and the Finance Board during budget season. So currently, we just have a meeting with the Finance Board, and they don't really necessarily get a chance to update the Select Board of what they're working on, why they're making their requests, and things that's happening. So they are in favor of moving forward with a collaborative and a joint meeting with the Select Board and the Finance Board. And then also coming in for, as we mentioned, maybe a year-end wrap-up or something of that nature, or something prior, or mid-year check-in so that the board understands where the departments are, and if there's any concerns, they can be brought to the board's attention well in advance of an issue coming up. But they felt as though, you know, two designated meetings, one-on-one with the boards, were sufficient. And then if anything came up, having that reoccurring agenda item made them feel comfortable that they can just be added to the agenda as needed. So we can talk about that in more detail if the board would like. The other two updates I had is that the auditors are here this week for their preliminary work. Everything seems to be going smoothly, and that's a true testament to both Ellen and Michelle for getting them all of the information. They need to pull a warrant or a payroll to make sure that we're following all the rules, and they've been running around all day. And it's been very helpful because now I think we're smooth sailing. So when they come back, we should be in good shape. They also wanted to let us know that they were impressed with the amount of work that we had done with all of our policies. They've never seen so many policies put in place. And they really appreciate the fraud risk policy that we just passed, the whistleblower policy, and the internal controls that the town accountant has been working diligently on. So they were very impressed with that and think that we'll be in good shape moving forward. I did have a resident stop by the other day about a concern about getting in touch with the Select Board because it's not really a designated, you know, if they don't have a computer, they can't just email you and have you get back to them. We don't give out your personal cellphone or telephone numbers, obviously. There's the boundaries there. But we do have, you know, a line that's for the Select Board, so they can call that line. And we do have a voicemail, and I can take a message and forward it along. I did let them know that that number, and I would make a statement on TV, is 978-556-7204. I will take the message, and I will deliver it to any specific board member that is being requested, or to the board as a whole. Once we do have the executive coordinator's position, as Selectman Watson had mentioned, it will be nice to have somebody there full-time so that they can greet and answer any of the residents' questions and/or get that resident in contact with a Select Board member that they're looking for. So I did want to make sure that we mentioned that we are constantly trying to make sure that we're not just communicating through social media, Facebook, Instagram, website, and email. We are trying to make sure that we're, we're being available through other means. And I have a meeting that I would like to have with the Council on Aging Director about maybe putting in contact information in their newsletter. She's been fantastic about getting things out there, and it's been very popular and well-received. So I think that's another way for us to get other forms of contact information out to residents who might not typically use electronic forms of communication. And then lastly, I just wanted to give a huge shout-out to Chief Valentine and Lieutenant Riley for their help in delivering a baby girl this past Tuesday. We are very fortunate to have the teamwork between the police and fire department, and I'm extremely grateful for everything that they do. And I just wanted to make sure that they got the recognition because I hear it was quite the adventure.
Got everything. That's a lot. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Ed, Selectman's time.
Yeah, just a few things. A bit of congratulations, a shout-out to some people. First of all, Steve Collins, Collins Tree, the past bad storm that we had, there was a couple of trees that came down in Tracy Guilford's yard. Steve sent his crew in there and didn't charge Tracy. Tracy's going through some rough times medically. And Steve and his crew came in and took care of the stuff in the afternoon. No, no charge to Tracy. And he did, they did a great job. And he, he deserves a big thank you for that. Another one that we, we neglect an awful lot, a couple of the guys in the Highway Department, Bill Green, very talented individual. And people, a lot of people probably don't realize that Bill totally refurbished an old truck that was basically junk. And he did a tremendous job. Put a service body on the back, painted it, painted it himself. And it looks like, it looks like a new truck now. He did, he did an unbelievable job. And he is, he is a talented person. And when he decides to retire in 10 years or so, hopefully, we're going to miss him. The other, the crew in the Highway Department that spread the mulch in Groveland Square, fantastic job. And I don't know where else they did it, but really looked, really looked fantastic. They did a great job for the holiday. Looked great. They worked at it. They got it done. The other one, maybe the shout-out to the electric company. They put the flags up for the holiday at the polls, utility polls, again this year. Really looked good for Memorial Day. They always step up and help out. A great job by them. But thank you.
Can I also ask Steve Collins also, Steve Collins also dug the hole for the two new trees in front of the library. He came and dug them up. We purchased the trees. I mean, he volunteered his time to do that.
Oh, I didn't know that. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
And the trees he donated by Jan and Mike Dempsey.
Oh, okay.
The flowers dug one from the manager's that he donated, right?
Okay.
Twenty years ago, so it looks nice.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I didn't know that. But Steve, I guess, Steve Collins dug a hole for the trees out in front of the library. I didn't know that. And again, thank you, Steve, for all your help.
Becky?
I got nothing.
Jason?
Yeah, I do want to thank the Highway Department as well for getting the boat ramp out and redoing the dock itself. It really was an incredible job that they did.
So, I know it's late, so we'll wrap it up. But I just wanted to reach out to my, my board members, my colleagues. If, if you have agenda items, you can feel free to call directly to Rebecca or email her. You know, as a teacher, I know I'm not that accessible during the school day. And I also feel like we're a collaborative group so that Rebecca contacts me and goes over what she thinks will fit on the agenda. For the most part, I trust her judgment on that. So if you ask for an item and we can't fit it, I'm sure we'll get it onto the next agenda. So anything, any questions or concerns you have, you can, you don't have to wait to talk to me or bring it up during this time. You can bring it up during this time, but you can also just, as it hits you in the head, just let Rebecca know that you'd like something on the agenda, and she'll, she'll see if that will fit in. The only other thing I had is, in the spirit of trying to figure out ways to, to include our residents in our meetings more, I know, coming to a Board of Selectmen meeting, really, I know, right? Thanks, Laura. I appreciate that visual. But we, you know, we don't tend to get a public comment unless somebody seems to be maybe angry about something, for the most part. So I wondered how my board members would feel about if we tried to do, I don't know, question of the month that we pose and say, if you have some thoughts on this and you want to zoom in or you want to appear, we'd be interested to hear your thoughts on this question of the month. And obviously, we're not going to make it a really difficult one, like how to balance the tax rate or something, but just a general thing, that's something maybe that we might have coming up on, on our horizon, and, and maybe we'd appreciate some feedback from the townspeople. I don't know how you all feel about that.
I like that idea. It prompts conversation, right? Because they just see public comment.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't...
It's vague, you know?
Yeah. I would want everybody to, to weigh in on it and come up with something. And we just put it on the agenda as the question of the month, and then leave it there maybe for a month and see if anybody wants to talk to us.
See if they take the bait.
See if they take the bait, yeah. We'll have to make it a good question. But anyway, those are my closing thoughts. So if you wanted to make a motion to adjourn, it's after nine o'clock. I'm sure we're exhausted. Good meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay. Call in favor?
Yep.
Meeting's adjourned at 9:12 PM. Thank you so much. Great meeting. Thank you, everybody. We covered a lot.